So let's say, uh so this is a very special version of the consciousness radio. Uh called the Rame YouTube. And uh we are going to start with the self introduction. Of the people who attended the uh. Qualia structure meeting.
Mmm.
Last week. So, Muneki, please.
Did you post it? Did you post it in Slack? Oh, sorry, in X. I want to repost it.
Hmm?
Mmm. Of course.
Not yet, I think.
Not yet?
Not yet.
And we arrived.
Okay, alright, so let let me start the self introduction, okay. So I I'm a postdoc in the University of Tokyo and the University of California, San Francisco. And uh yeah, I'm a fellow of the JSPS and it is a CPD cross-border postdoc. So that I'm, you know, the belonging to the always me, Masahumi laboratory, but physically in UCSF. Working on the nematode C. elegans and I'm a biologist. But uh my, you know, the goal is, you know, the uh. Testing the IIT on the C. elegans, so that's my goal and what I wanted to do. And can can we talk about the uh qualia structure meeting or self-introduction only?
Yeah, maybe self-introduction first.
Okay, so the next.
Then can you probably, probably you don't need to change the angle.
Mmm.
It's fine, I think. Yeah, probably it's fine.
Yeah.
Uh, my name is Matteo Grasso. I work in Madison, Wisconsin, in the IIT lab with Giulio Tononi. My background is in philosophy. I did my undergrads and PhD in philosophy. But I was interested in consciousness, so I also did a master's in cognitive science. And then I joined um the IT lab to do research on neuroscience of consciousness and how to study consciousness through IIT. Um, in particular, I'm interested in contents of experience like qualia, like spacetime, uh concepts, uh colors, pain. And I'm also interested in the metaphysics of causation and and metaphysics of consciousness um through the lens of IIT, which is, I think, a useful framework to study all these things. Um, and I am right now in Japan, just visiting for this meeting. Uh, we'll return to the US tomorrow, so it's last night in Japan.
Yeah, Miyazura, Miyazura.
Uh, hi, my name is Francesco Lià. I'm a postdoc researcher at ATR uh near Kyoto. Um, I actually just started working there last month, so I'm pretty new in Japan. My background is primarily in philosophy of science. And um before, uh during my PhD, I visited, I was a honorary fellow at the the Tononi's lab uh for um about half of my PhD. Uh did some works focusing specifically on integrated information theory, which is one of my main interests. And I think this are really exciting time to be a philosopher of science, where the once-in-a-lifetime uh chance to see maybe a paradigm changing, shifting. And so I'm really excited to be here talking consciousness with these wonderful people.
Hi, I'm Eiko Matsuda. Uh, my my interest is about individual differences of subjective world like synesthesia or having dreams or something like internal speech, like someone is more visual oriented and some other people is more auditory oriented or something like that. So I I I I'm very interested in, yeah, it's kind of individual differences and but more common, uh, yeah, something like that. But I already drunk a beer. By the way, I like this restaurant. I think this is the best restaurant ever in the world.
I can already see it.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Your voice is a bit too soft, so maybe move it.
Okay.
I will, I will speak stronger.
Or or change the angle like this.
Ah, okay, okay.
Because you know, up until Francesco, I was able to hear.
Ah, I see.
Mmm, tea.
Well, probably I can see it from this angle, it should be alright.
The angle is important.
So.
でも, you don't appear.
I'm the MC, so I don't need to. So let's let's start with the kampai.
Okay, okay. So I I will take a beer.
And uh.
Yeah, um.
Ah.
If there's any.
Can you get me one too?
Okay, okay.
I trust your choice.
Eh! What about your beer?
Yeah, perfect.
Can I try then?
Yeah, probably this sandal is fine, I think. Uh.
Yes.
Maybe.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Last name? Shiba-kado.
Ah, okay, okay.
Why are you there?
Seems like, it's not super common to know, yeah. Usually.
Kind of very long relationship, right? Because, yeah, I I I loved this. I I have loved, huh?
Wow.
When I was a master student.
Kampai!
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 Ah, oh, you see YouTube.
You know, YouTube.
Mmm, so we can do anything in this period, right?
Yeah. I mean.
Something stupid.
It actually delays. And do you like the work?
I think, you know, the.
Like that? I I'm trying, I I'm trying. Ah, okay, 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 okay. Yeah, direction is important.
I see. The most exciting thing I expect about consciousness, about consciousness researcher. Of course, I enjoy the conversation with the legendary generation, like the Okano-ya-san. Consciousness researcher doesn't give direction.
But you know, it's gonna be.
You know very well.
Yeah, so that I noticed that uh not always heading to the same direction. I mean, that sometimes the, you know, the someone is interested in the broad qualia and the vivid qualia, but others are interested in the narrow and the specific qualia.
Mmm.
But that's okay, but uh in the intermediate consciousness researchers, they are understanding the in the intermediate consciousness researchers, they are understanding the what they are interested in uh different from the what others are interested in, others are interested in. So that we can talk with each other, why they started to, you know, so that we can talk with each other, why they started to, you know, become interested in what's familiar.
Oh.
But, ah, okay, yeah. And the dis- uh disappointing point, everything was yeah beyond expected. But uh actually, I needed uh uh ten more, uh ten more days. I mean, the two weeks uh should be, yeah, too short, yeah, days. I mean, the two weeks uh should be, yeah, too short, yeah, that was mine.
Well, everyone is complaining about the, yeah, you know, that meeting was too long.
Too long?
I know.
Too long?
Eh?
I I know, too too long for PI and the.
After.
Uh, before, yeah, before.
Yeah, before, right? Yeah, I do that, you know, everybody's gonna complain that the five days is gonna be too long, I do.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
Is is like the summer school was like uh two weeks, but it would have been two months necessary to uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you also, did you feel the same way before you go? Uh, you feel like uh four nights and five days are too long, but after you join, then it feels like it passed really quickly.
No, no, no. Mmm, uh, yeah, the, yeah, it it passed very quickly. But I'm kind of used to it, used to this kind of very long meeting. Because whenever I was a child, I joined a camp.
Ah.
Mmm.
Very long, long time, like one week or two weeks time.
Ah, it's like a camp.
Yeah. Consciousness camp.
Consciousness camp.
Yeah.
So in the next time in Okinawa, I like like to have a campfire.
Nah, that would be great.
I don't know whether we can do camp, ah, okay.
Considerable.
Well, yeah. Um, that's a little bit more complicated, because you could argue that that's not necessarily subjective experience, but also potentially cognition or um this could be biased by methodologies, you know, it's a bit more complicated. I think starting from the building block.
Whole experience, experience as whole. So I'm not kind of interested in the very, very narrow sense of qualia, what is redness or something? What is like, so what is beer or something like that? But I'm interested in the, yeah, experience as a whole. But I don't like to s- I don't like to say, call it as a broad qualia. Something is confusing because she suggested the vividness is important to understand. No, 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 I don't think qualia and vividness is completely different.
Okay.
Mmm.
Because vividness can changeable, can be changeable. I mean.
And the qualia is not changeable?
I think so, because qualia is just a, um, how can I say, ongoing, can I say? Qualia is something like, well, very, I I have no, I have draw.
You cannot manipulate by change.
Content change.
So if you're, yeah, but if you're trying to explain experience change. So if you're, yeah, but you feel then then trying to say that you're.
Content change. Sorry, sorry. Uh, I I I can follow you. But, well, qualia is something li- really like generated immediately. I mean, time to time. This is like a meta-ness, is like a meta cognition. So you or some someone vividness of experience. But qualia itself is not re- you can evaluate the vividness of qualia, but qualia itself doesn't uh is not relevant to it. For instance, well, I I, when I was a child, I realized this very moment is most boring, most most unvivid.
Okay.
In Saturday, I had nothing.
Ah, synesthesia.
No, 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 not synesthesia, like Wednesday. Uh, I I went, went back, Wednesday is, I I can, I could went back earlier to home.
Mmm.
So Wednesday had had something special. On Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Friday, and have some special meaning, kind of fun, very fun or kind of some suffering. But Thursday had nothing, very boring, no meaning.
Boring.
So, uh, but, so I realized this just moment is most not, how can I say, in unimportant to me.
Yeah.
Non-vivid, nothing. But so then I I will try to ha- name it, name this experience. So uh so on. How can I say? Then every, I I decided to remember this very boring moment for every Thursday in future. So this is the most exciting moment. So I mean, I, so what I like to say, boring is not relevant to qualia, but yeah, you can, yeah, just add the.
Actually, we have the consensus that we are interested in vivid broad qualia as a goal. But my question is, uh, if you are interested in that aspect of consciousness and uh it went some explanation about that, then that explanation can explain the narrow qualia as well, what?
ごめん、お待たせ。I'm sorry, could you say it again?
So probably, what what you mean is that the ultimate is very interesting and broad qualia.
Yes, yeah.
But first understand narrow, then build up to broad, or that if you go to the broad.
Mmm.
Right. We should start with the two parameters?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. ありがとうございます。
Right?
It's it's narrow, like there's some balances, uh, like negative balance, um. But but your point about CNC is very, very true, like we shouldn't assume that the components are always the same. I agree with that. I totally agree with that, yeah, that's an excellent point, mhm.
I I understand. I kind of understand.
What's happening?
Do you not think?
No, it's too heavy.
Sometimes.
It's a little too heavy.
It is recorded by Zoom, but broad broadcasted by YouTube. At the same time. Okay.
Very delicious.
Ah, I saw this card, that's really nice, really nice. I'm really happy together. You can come here from time to time.
Yes, whenever I will visit Tokyo, I will come here, I promise.
Mmm, okay.
Uh, so the next year, the Kobohan, you know, proposal will be open again, right?
Mmm.
So then you can, you guys can, you know, definitely explicitly address this kind of thing, like, you know.
Mmm.
So far, qualia structure has been strongly biased towards a narrow qualia.
Ah.
Qualia structure has been strongly biased towards a narrow qualia.
Ah.
And and therefore, we really make sure.
But how do you, can you say, how do you do it? What's the, what's the thing? How do you do broad qualia?
Micro phenomenology.
Without talking about narrow qualia? How do you do that?
Right, right.
Micro phenomenology?
I I think that's, that's a bit too coarse.
Mmm.
I mean, the the first step, you know, if you prefer the narrow approach, my my proposal is actually, you know, also written in Zoi's, you know, picks um article that I shared. Um, but starting from bimodal. Thing, like a similarity structure of the color and the similarity structure of the shape. And then you make a prediction about the color, shape similarity based on just that and that. And then if the, you know, these two modality actually just combines as predicted,
Mmm.
then you get the precise prediction, right?
Mm.
About similarity matrix of this bimodal.
Yeah.
But I predicted, everybody has some kind of synesthesia.
Mmm, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I I did the informal, you know, inventory to many people.
Mmm.
And then what they said was like, let's say, you know, circle is similar to, let's say, square compared to triangle, right?
Mmm, mmm.
Probably everybody says that.
Yeah.
And it's, and also square is more similar to triangle compared to the line.
Mmm.
Yeah.
Pretty much everybody says that, okay, right? And then red is also similar to uh yellow compared to probably blue.
Circle? Mmm.
Right?
Mmm.
No doubt.
And so on. And then, so you have this color similarity structure and then uh shape similarity structure.
Mmm.
Now, if I ask red circle
Mmm.
and uh yellow triangle.
Mmm. Blue square.
How how different they are, how similar they are?
Circles must be red, synesthetically.
Right? But thi- this is.
So, this is not synesthetic.
So, red red circle and a triangle, yellow field, right?
Do you really?
Green triangle.
Oh, yeah, green tri- yeah, you you were there, right?
I wasn't.
I was.
You you wasn't, yeah, you didn't agree, but that feels right. And then in addition to this shape and the the color, color similarity, this rightness probably builds on top of it, probably.
Mmm.
Yeah.
So similarity structure of these two modality combined is not gonna be predictable, probably.
Indeed. Mmm.
Yeah.
Right, but the part I don't understand is why is this any any more about broad qualia than than about narrow qualia?
Yeah. No, it's not, it's not, but.
No, but he's saying that this is a step towards broad.
And so it it is just, combines, combine, combines.
Yeah, but then in the end, yeah, but you're still talking about subset of experience.
But wait, 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 wait.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It it fall, it felt a little bit flat, but during the qualia structure meeting, I suggested to maybe rethink about the terminology of narrow and broad qualia and introduce something similar to IIT micro, meso and macro. Something that captures the upper and the lower bound and something that can be anything in between. I think this is, because every time we say narrow qualia, there are people that mean a very narrow experience.
Mmm.
There are people that mean the narrowest experience. And then there are people like you rightfully said, that you mean just even a broad experience, any experience that is not the whole experience, that the the whole qualia.
Any subset.
So nar- narrower are broader. That's that's better?
I think I think you need three. I think lower and upper.
Mmm.
Oh, why can you not? No, why why not? I mean, I think it does a spectrum.
Because 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 that, of course, is a spectrum, but it is since it it's pointless to have a one hundred thousand, so three is good.
But that's, I I think it's.
Because it it what you, what is really relevant is the upper, I think, upper, lower bound and anything in between.
I don't know. I mean, to me, it's really interesting that experience is structured in a nested doll, like Russian doll way, right?
Yeah, 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 it's good.
So you have all these layers. It's not, it's not very discrete, like, and and that's a, that's the most interesting part of experience, I I think.
Yeah.
So, so so narrow and broad, that's two cores, adding a a something in between, I think it just loses the 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 fact that unless you compare two experiences as as some monolithical things, just like experience one, experience two, right?
Yeah.
But that becomes also, how do you compare them if not in terms of their contents, which is narrow qualia?
Yeah.
I'm very extreme on one side, so it's totally okay if nobody is, if nobody agrees, but.
I mean, I mean.
I mean, I'm saying you compare two experiences ultimately only based on their contents.
No.
And so it's narrow qualia through and through, broad qualia is just a.
It's that's that's, I don't think it's, I mean, yes, it's true. But you also need the, like, the the like, that that's something we, it's come up quite some times during these days. Um, imagine like two experiences, arigato gozemas. Imagine two experiences, um.
You get better in Japanese.
Thank you. Um. So, yeah, I was saying, just imagine two experiences, like we we, this is something we discussed and we can discuss again maybe,
Mmm.
of space between uh like understanding space as a as a IIT suggests.
Mmm.
And imagine like an adult, a human adult and uh ant, a bug, a little bit bug, okay?
Uh-huh.
So if you unfold the cause-effect structure, clearly, the cause-effect structure of the human, clearly, I don't know, but most likely will be much, much richer, much, much richer, okay?
Mmm.
But then you can still superimpose, you know, that 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 there is some kind of structural preservation
Mmm.
if IIT is correct.
Oh.
Right? So in this sense, but that there is also the other side of the coin, that you can say, well, of course, the experience of the ant of the space is not the experience of the adult human being, because the adult human being has so much more distinctions about space.
Yeah, but so for instance, you just, you're talking about space, right?
Yeah.
This is narrow qualia.
No, 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 yeah, but it depends, because if if you have, no, 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 no,
It's an aspect of experience. What do you mean? It's an aspect of experience.
Because if you have an experience that is purely spatial, that's the world qualia.
Yes. Yeah, but then you compared it to distinction, you said one has more than the other, and to me, that is the content.
Yeah, 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 that that's true, but but, but.
But I just, there's no way to compare two experiences without talking about content.
Well, I mean, yes, 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 but but there are two sides of 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 component.
Component.
The the quantity and in this case, the way it relates or.
But do you do you think that actually, you know, sometimes people talk about the quantity of consciousness?
Mm.
Mmm.
Our vividness, our intensity.
Mmm. Mmm.
I don't know whether that's something that, you know.
Ah, quality of consciousness.
Yeah.
I understand, okay.
We we talk about the qual- quality of the consciousness, but that's.
Qualia, quality, okay.
But also quantity, also quantity.
Yeah, vividness, vividness, okay.
Is that quantity?
Level, yeah.
Or level or intensity distinguished from uh quality or is a part of the quality, right?
Mmm.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, is is a is another aspect of quality, I think, I think.
I also think that the vividness, for instance, is is one aspect, but but to me, that means it it is also
Mmm.
Yeah, vividness is nothing like that.
Mmm, mmm, mmm.
an aspect that you can describe and in a sense, it is narrow qualia, like it is a
Mmm.
an aspect that you can separate from everything else, right?
Uh-huh.
A dimension, maybe you can call it, but but uh you also have the vividness of color, the vividness of sound, the vividness of pain, the vividness of your sense of reality itself, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Ah, wa-私もお願いします.
Oh.
Do you like a日本酒? Sake?
Yes, yes.
It's a tasting.
どどどこから買っちゃっていい?
Good luck.
結局なので他のも試してみたくて。
Why go here? Ah, yeah. Ah, that that okay.
あ、はい。
噛まない?
噛まないです。He can se- select best sake for you. あ、二つ。
なんでこっちに言え?
Just for promotion, promoting this restaurant. なんかご希望ございますか? あ、冷たいで。どっちの? おでんで、おでん、おでん、おでん。
What's my? It depends on the.
おー。おー。
わいじゃないですね。
Subject, object. それに合わせて。なるほど。じゃあ僕は冷たい。
僕も。
そうなんだ。気分いいな。
Cold, cold? Right. So he was, he was talking about something like, almost like Nishida philosophy.
Yeah.
What?
The really reversal of the, you know, thinking.
あー、object, subject.
I I asked him, because he, I thought he has already some kind of a things to put there in terms of food.
Association.
And then I just asked him, uh, like in the wine, right? You know, uh, do you have sake that goes well with the food that he plans?
Mmm.
And he said, that's nonsense. Because I I first need to decide what kind of sake I want, then he will adjust the food.
Okay.
Mmm.
Not a subject, object reversal.
Real master.
Yeah.
あ、ありがとうございます。
And you you're right, that he's a master of sake.
Yeah!
And food.
Yeah, that's why. Mmm,すごいですね。
Great. Do do you drink sake often or not?
No.
I get some, but it's last.
Some? いやさんは?
あ、僕は飲まないです。
Ah, no?
Be beer only.
Beer only.
なるほど。
あんま、あの初心者ぐらいだよ。初心者扱いしてください。だからQualiaの話をしてるな。
深いねー。
柴田さん、Qualiaの研究者だよ。He's a sake Qualia.
Researcher.
あ、yes, we should collaborate with him. ありがとうございます。
He's a denying basically the conceptual Qualia about sake.
いただきます。あ、これ美味しい。なるほど。おでん美味しいですね。
Yeah, おでん美味しい。
Very nice おでん。
Yes.
You had all of soup, nice soup.
Yes.
今夜のご注文は。私こっちの白い方が好きです。
Sorry, sorry, which one for you?
White or black? 楽しいですね。
俺も白かな? White.
しーっていうなら白です。
Francesco, you also need to pay attention to the time.
Yeah, yeah.
え、あ、are you just leaving?
Twitter?
Yeah, we will.
From from this place?
Yeah, 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 eight forty.
あ。
Eight forty?
Yeah.
Eight forty.
Okay. Yeah, you you have.
バイ新幹線?
Yeah, by Shinkansen.
Very busy.
White, don't don't say here, shiroi.
Feeding, feeding.
Ah, yes, that that.
白い。
White, just white. I like the white better, uh, white better, I hate.
Uh, kore wa?
これです。これです。
俺も全員だ。So, yeah, Muneki, your hypothesis about the preference has a consistency. You are correct.
Nonvariability. If we were once, we would all, all agree.
もう。
So further, further threshold to check.
いただきます。
Maybe have to go with it, it's a, it's a fire.
ああ。なるほど。
あの、それはそれまでちょっと考えますんで。
Muneki, why, why, why you don't drink sake?
あ、そうだね。
Because uh, I need to wake up early tomorrow morning, tomorrow morning.
あ、really?
Like what time?
Eight AM.
ああ、very early, tomorrow is Saturday.
Yeah, I, I have a reservation in a, a dental clinic, yeah.
あ、okay, important.
I cannot speak that, but it's okay, I, I prefer beer than sake.
ああ、okay.
That's a preference, individual difference.
Yeah, that's my preference.
Yeah, yeah, outline.
But, but, yeah, 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 yeah.
どれが正解か間違いか。
No, yeah.
テストではないの?
僕は白で。
白?
はい。
はい。
俺も白です。
はい。
Ah. Just very good.
Have you designed?
Which one?
Which, which of three? I mean, basically, because you already chose uh, white, you know, it's either white or blue, blue.
結構中々になってきました。
Oh,はい。
Shir desu.
By the way。
Shiro.
おお、ラーメンも。あ、全然全然。
熱量が足りないぞ。
選択肢としてラーメンもあります。
Oh, that's, that's very good. You see?
You too.
It's the overflow.
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 Yeah. Phenomenological overflow.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you come to Japan and this place, uh, you can.
Highly recommended.
You can get the phenomenon logical overflow in front of you.
いただきます。あ。
Um, is this aoi?
はい。
Aoi, is it blue?
ああ。
Blue.
Aoi onegaishimasu.
どうですか?
Oh, you like blue.
Individual difference.
Yes, you know, it's um, so, w- exactly, so, how would you describe the, the similarity? What was similar between white and, and blue?
They both dry and sweet.
There was and, 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 and the green was different from white and, you think white and blue were more similar?
Definitely, a hundred percent.
Right?
To, to me.
I think for white.
White was very different.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Also from blue, closer to green or closer to blue?
No, blue and green it's.
Yeah.
To me, like, it's almost the same, blue and uh.
Like this.
Oh, yeah, 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 me too.
No, no.
Blue and green?
あ、really, different, same as you.
Yeah.
Oh, you did.
That's right.
Yeah, this is sweetest, these are more fruity and sweet.
Yep.
For me, something like the. あ、okay.
And, and this is more bitter, or uh, uh, bitter.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, this is.
Or at least let's.
Actually, how many actually actually though?
I just want sour.
Sour, more sour.
Sour.
Yeah, I, I, I agree a hundred percent with what Francesco said, like, the white is good but sweeter, the blue is a little close to white but less sweet, and I think white will be overwhelming.
I agree.
Right.
In between. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I actually prefer more the white, but but, but I still, the structure is the same.
Ah, okay, right, for me in two sweet, yeah. Exactly, yeah.
あ、really?
And then, green was sour, you said?
Less sweet, at least, less sweet.
I agree, I agree with white and green, but blue is.
なんか。
An inch of sour.
はい、はい。はい。
おおお。
はい、はい。
うんうんうんうんうん。But, I agree with green and. ええ。ええ。クリ、クリティカルの軸が違うんです。
だから人それぞれなので。
ええ。
A bit more dry.
That's a, that's a, that's a, that's a individual thing.
Which do you prefer?
It should be affective, but sure, yeah, other aspects, so, right, that doesn't matter at all, ah.
あお。
Yeah, I, I, yeah, no.
The coffee.
Are you changing the mic?
うん。
Take on blue.
I finished the, the two and I think, yeah, this is. But they're both very good.
うん。
これなんか蜂蜜みたいな味入ってないの?
あ、美味しいです。
The deepening sense of.
このビール。
うんうんうん。
ハニーやは蜂蜜みたいな味。
うん。
とまあ、まあ。
ええ。
まあ、その。
Yeah, I'm. うん、まあちょっと濃い面感じ。
In terms of the spirit, man?
こう。
Alcohol, alcohol.
蜂蜜みたいな味しちゃう。
うんうん、言われて見えるわかります。
In terms of alcohol versus other.
お土産にもでかい。でもこれ。そうなんですか?洗濯とかどうしてるんですか?
してる?
あ、そうか、洗濯してるんですね。
してる。
二週間洗濯なしではないんですか?
三週間?
確かに、それは洗濯しないと。
俺三週年以上。Twenty-four days.
でもよくこの楽器の真ん中で休めますね、その。
本件の。
授業とかもいいんですか?
A laundry, yeah.
うか。
Did you do a laundry while you were there in Japan?
Yeah.
うん。
Ah, I did one in uh.
今って冬休みなんです。
Shonan.
Shonan.
試験です。
That's, that's, I just only one I did.
そうなんですね。
No, actually, I did one in Nikko.
Ah, Nikko, nice.
ちんちんがないんだよ。
あ、そうなん、いいですね。
Yeah, and I thought actually I should have brought less clothes and just washed them all.
全然してないですよ、私。
So annoying to travel.
火曜日にニコ。
Yeah.
For me.
Yeah, 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 I agree. I couldn't eat that too.
I think it's the texture more like.
火曜日に。
Because it's crunchy.
I, I, I have that, that texture, yeah.
Crunchy meat is like, for me.
あ、そうなん。
で、そのうち今回この日は今回。
Every time.
おお、いいですね。
It's almost like.
おお。
Cart, cart lane, cart lane.
いいですね。
いいですね。
うん、でもね、私もね。
Ah, from the, ah.
Yeah, I, I, I.
そうなんだけど、その二倍ぐらいですかね。
特、特任教科?
Yeah, some parts of, like Francesco know, like cart, like, I don't know, it, it feels crunchy more than the.
千人光。なんかカメラ前になっちゃうですね。
Yeah, right.
全然違ってるけど。松田さんの。まあいいや。
Actually, Matada-san gave mention about what are good and what are bad about the Korea structure meeting.
Ah, yeah, 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 we, we.
I completely forget the one.
Yeah.
And now, 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 as well.
Completely forget, what about the, what, what is?
What's the good? Well. About bad thing.
Bad thing first.
No, 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 I really enjoyed the meeting. I really enjoy, but when I came back to home, I just feel kind of lonely.
Mmm.
Ah.
And I just feel kind of, well, oh, I was so excited by the meeting.
Mmm.
So now, it's something very calm.
Low, low energy.
That, that's same for the summer school, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Many people, summer school actually said that.
あ、okay.
I mean, I honestly, the, the, the pulse, you know, there's some, some depression pulse. I'm not joking, like, like.
Really?
Yeah.
Yes, you are with people who kind of share your passion, inform your friendship, they kind of understand each other, and seeing something that the rest of the world might not actually be, you know.
ええ。
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Considering as important, and then suddenly, you're disconnected.
Yeah, something very.
We need a transition period, like a little bit of buffer.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Especially because we entered into the ASSC right after.
Oh.
Yeah.
ああ。
So, summer school, we were in a kind of a, very into the fighting goal.
Yeah. Yeah.
True.
I see.
But actually, for us, it was even more tricky, because it was summer sc- uh, it was two weeks in Japan, um, w- w- visiting, then summer school.
Mmm.
Then, uh, ASSC, and then, uh, the, the pre, actually, pre-ASSC, ASSC, Hokkaido.
ASSC?
Okido? ASSC, yeah.
Uh-huh. Hokkaido.
Where we met, actually, and, and then, you know, like, was a month essentially, from the start to the end of the summer, from the start of the summer school, so.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was twenty-six days, like, very, very intense, traveling all across Japan, it was very nice, actually, but.
Yeah. But how do you feel about the, the Slack, uh, community?
Mm.
Like, I think there was, actually, you maybe monitor more than us all the channels, were, did they keep active after?
Some of them, some of them, but uh, that, that's something I actually expected, you know, definitely it will go down, right?
Mm.
うん。
Of course, yeah.
The, but uh, probably, next year, around this time, you know, when we do this next summer school, or this, you know, grant meeting.
うん。うん。うん。
You know, because of that, there will be some kind of, you know, reminder and stuff, some, like Zoe's, you know, paper.
Mm, yeah.
うん。
And then I try to post it to everybody.
うん。
And then, potentially, some other project also starts to come out, like now and then, so.
うん。
Like?
Like our projects, yeah.
Right, yeah, right.
Yeah, 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 something like that. And then, I also, I also want to kind of encourage people to also start to post the pre, you know, uh.
Journal club?
Yeah, journal club, bo- both, you know, summer school, also, this grant meeting, journal club, maybe on the YouTube.
うん。うん。うん。
Maybe, you know, participants may, may not see it, but you know, we'll see, ah, how it goes, but some of them maybe, you know, viewed a lot.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that may start to open the conversation again, potentially.
うん。
Right.
By the way, you guys, you know, the introduction to IIT, journal club, with, uh, you know, our love, it's viewed relatively often.
うん。
Yeah.
うん。Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, something.
あ、yeah.
Pretty good.
Well, we can have, by the way, we can have more of those, like.
Yeah, yeah, we actually promised to have one more.
あ。
Yeah, because, in a sense, like, uh, okay, so this might overlap a little bit with the IIT podcast that we've been having just for going through the wiki pages one by one.
It's a very good.
Mm.
ああ。あ、great.
But, if there is something that is interesting for your channel, that you think maybe a Q and A, like an ask-me-anything AMA, you know, session or something like that.
Yeah.
うん。
Uh, yeah, we could do something like that.
うんうん。
I mean, today's, you know, our conversation could have been also on YouTube, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, it's super, you know, raw, and nobody understands it, but, but the, I, I, I'm thinking, you know.
Right. No.
Making it that kind of potentially available is interesting.
うん。Yeah, yeah, 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 yeah.
Because this is a science in making, right, uh, I mean, i- it's sometimes uh, interesting to see the comments from the, you know, people who watched it.
うん。
And that, recently, I, I found one comment, from seventy-seven-year-old Japanese guy, common.
うん。あ、really? うん。
From seventy-seven-year-old Japanese guy.[1382.51] From seventy seven year old Japanese guy.
Ah, really?
Mm-hmm.
Watched the my conversation with Takashi Ikegami for two hours.
Ah.
Oh, oh, oh. Yeah, yeah.
And he said that, you know, I'm I I'm a just ordinary Japanese.
Um.
And uh who has no uh education in mathematics or physics.
Um.
But I found your conversation super interesting.
Oh.
If I'm not seventy seven, but I if I'm seventeen.
Um.
Then my life might have been completely different.
I would.
Um.
He said that, so something like that, you know, I think it can happen.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
We'll see, right? I mean, uh, like Kyoko, who was uh initiated by Ryota, right?
Yeah. Ah, um, 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 ah, really?
Yeah.
You guys were talking now, or maybe Ma- Masahumi was saying, or you guys were talking?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I I was saying, yeah, yeah, she she told me that uh she read or she came across one of her I I T paper.
Um.
And somehow reached out to Ryota Kanai.
Um.
And he encouraged her passion to pursue this topic.
Um.
And what I think is really amazing is like that, uh, you know, um, after so many years, I mean, not so many, but uh she's she's still very young. But she's still pursuing this uh this dream or passion or interest, put it as you want.
Um.
And I think this is um really beautiful when you're really motivated to do something like that, right? So.
Yeah, that that's kind of the interesting thing about science as a life, right?
Um, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe Murek can talk about it, but uh he he was initially initiated by Takashi, right?
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Takashi?
Takashi Ikegami during the class or something, right?
Ah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That not not at all the YouTube, but just a in a class, the University of Tokyo.
Yeah.
But he said, uh, any neuroscience research which is not working on the consciousness is not interesting at all.
Yeah, 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 I agree, I represent.
Did he say it's it was false or not intern?
Not.
Not not interesting at all.
Okay, I see.
Not not false.
Yeah, I I hundred percent agree with that.
And then you are convinced completely.
Right, I was inspired because I was interested in the consciousness, but no neuroscience researchers were talking about the consciousness. It was taboo fifteen years ago.
Um.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Ah.
Takashi said it should be the most important aspect.
Um.
It's like new two thousand ten?
Two s- two thousand eleven.
Yeah, something like that. Um.
Eleven?
Yeah.
Mm.
Right, and then he was explaining about uh I I T free energy principle and every aspect about uh consciousness research.
Um.
And then I was interested in the individual topics, and then I joined, uh, you know, the seminar of Masahumi.
Ah, I see.
Yeah, then I how I learned I I T.
I see.
But uh o- o- everything was physical, not the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not YouTube, not online.
Online, mm.
Um.
At that time.
Mm.
But two thou- uh by two thousand ten, I think I I already got the PhD, as I was already postdoc.
Ah.
So I was bit uh surprised that there was still at that uh consciousness was considered taboo.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I think I met you first time in some of the A S S C, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh.
Ryota and Tsuchiya was kind of very bad guys, bad kids, well, no, no, not bad guy, but bad kid.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. You always tell me as a bad guy.
So they're.
Crazy.
Crazy.
You are also crazy.
No, 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 I'm normal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Normal, shy girl.
Yeah, normal crazy.
That's re- really what a crazy person would say, you know.
Crazyly normal, yeah, yeah, yeah. You are crazyly normal.
Uh, but yeah, you know, yeah, Tsuchiya-san, Ryota is was really very, yeah, doing everything very evil, you know.
Ryota is a criminal, yeah.
No, no, even evil.
But I but actually that, yeah, this is a part that no neuroscience researchers at the Komaba University of Tokyo.
Um.
Didn't study about the consciousness at all, at that time, right, right.
Ah, no, no, no.
Hmm.
But yeah, Takashi was interested in consciousness.
Only Takashi.
Only Takashi, but actually the community of A S S C, like Tsuchiya-san or Ryota and Takashi did not were not co- connected.
No.
Really?
But.
When when did you connect with?
I have no idea, but I.
I mean, Ryo- Ryota and I were in the same lab in Tokyo University.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Oh, okay.
In when you were what?
I when I was in the fourth year undergrad.
Ah, okay, okay.
Um.
When I joined in the same lab, Hirano lab, and then he was just in front of me, I at the, you know, initial, you know, kind of a a welcome thing.
Um.
Yeah. I know that.
And then, yeah, he was there and then I was, um, you know, he looked kind of senior to me, and then, but it turns out he was the same year, and then.
Oh.
I we get along a lot.
Um.
And during the whole year, I went to the lab after five P M always. And then we stayed in the lab until like two uh twelve or something like that. And then I left, because I was playing always in lacrosse, anyway.
Best friend.
Ah, you were playing lacrosse?
I was.
Ah.
I was quite serious about lacrosse.
Wow.
But you know, Ryota and Tsuchiya did journal club only alone with him, with only only alone themselves.
Themselves?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, I.
Best friend.
In a in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, really.
Ah, that's amazing.
Crazy.
That's amazing.
As a Japanese, really.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But we prepared for some kind of a seminar or conference where, you know, many famous, you know, Asian scientists came to Japan. And we wanted to kind of prepare for that. And then we decide, and then every every speaker had actually at least one nature paper.
Wow.
Um.
So, you know, it was kind of nice to like Lobo Thetis and then Jeffrey Shaw and the Mount cell and so on.
Um.
And then so we decided to just read the representative paper one by one and then present, you know, like one, I read one, and then I present that to the Ryota. And then Ryota read one, and then, you know, I asked or criticized, you know, I his explanation doesn't make sense and so on, and then.
Um. Oh.
But I think that that's for the preparation for the application to the PhD course in the U S or other countries, not not for Japanese.
No, preparation to go to that conference.
Just for conference?
Conference, I mean, I I applied to the PhD program at the time, but then at the time, by the time I actually, uh, uh, so. In in fact, it now I because you said that, I now start to remember this. I I was, I I applied eight U S grad school in California.
Um.
And then I thought that that, you know, I wouldn't probably, you know, uh, um, get in in Cal- Caltech or Stanford or something like that. But at least I would, you know, get, you know, the one that were lower, right?
Okay.
And then, you know, most of the, you know, speakers were coming from even better place.
Okay.
And then I prepared, and then I kind of started to try to prepare and they tried to impress them, right? And then by the time I I went to there, I already started to receive three or four rejection letters.
Okay.
And then at that time, I was completely, you know, hopeless.
Hmm.
And so I started to ask like Shinshimozho to give me some kind of uh advice on how to get into U S grad school. Yeah, so I I I forgot what I wanted to say in the first place, but uh, yeah, it wasn't uh super promising.
But actually, the the fact is that there there are no, you know, the famous consciousness researcher at that time.
Um.
And if there was that laboratory, then you can join that laboratory in Ja- in Japan, but there was no consciousness researchers at that time, right?
But at that time, now that you said that, I remember that I I and Ryota. Uh, shared the train.
Um.
Ride to that place with Victor.
Um. Oh.
Um.
So there was a big a box seat and me, Ryota and Victor Lame.
Yeah.
Lame?
Lame.
Victor Lame.
Victor Lame, Lame.
Lame, ah.
Lame is a very famous, you know, consciousness researcher now.
Ah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Lame, like Lame, Lame.
Lame. Sharing Lame.
Yeah. He's a Dutch guy.
Sorry, okay, okay.
And he was doing super creative kind of research.
Ah.
But at the same time, you know, when we had the drink during the conference, he was saying like, you know, I never go to the lab before five, nine.
Um.
I I always go to the home, um, around five, a little bit before five.
Um.
But he was doing the monkey research.
Hmm.
Um.
And he has pu- published like several nature papers around that time.
Ah.
It's super unusual.
Yeah, genius.
Mm.
Like, yeah, the nature paper with a monkey research?
Going back home very early.
Going, right? That's incredible, so I asked how how it comes, and so I I asked asked a lot of question to him. But also, you know, we had a B one hypothesis to Lame.
Ramen?
Lame. Whi- which is that, you know, somehow B one was very popularly, you know, studied in Japan. And about the B two, B three, and M T, and B four, and I T, almost all the interesting kind of areas right now. You know, uh, right, in little respect, it's a wrong kind of assumption, but you know, all the interesting areas were studied by U S, European people.
Ah.
But B one is studied by Japanese people.
Ah.
And why is that? You know, we asked the Lame, but Lame was actually studying B one and then doing something interesting.
Ah.
So, and so he was saying that, no, no, I I'm I'm not the, you know, European other type to study B to B five, but uh studying B one and then doing something interesting. I I don't know whether it makes sense, but uh we are thinking about, you know, Japanese people are not studying something interesting at that time.
Oh.
Just B one, yeah, yeah.
Um.
Mm. So, you know, the 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 wrong, you know, story coming back to that, at that time, people were actually studying consciousness, like including Lobo Thetis and also Mount cells.
Um.
Our attention is also kind of related to consciousness, but they didn't recognize or they didn't try to make the connection to consciousness.
Um.
Yeah. Yeah.
I see.
I think.
And you you were starting your master at the time, Mateo, yeah?
Me? Yes, 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 yes.
Yeah. And mo- moving your.
Around that time.
Two thousand and ten.
First steps into the I I T world.
Yeah, because I I studied philosophy as an undergrad in Torino in Italy, and then I realized, I discovered I I T.
Um.
I heard about I I T, I started reading, uh, I I read a book by Giulio in Italian, published in two thousand and four.
Oh, which one?
Galileo photodiodes, you know, yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
A five.
No, no, Galileo, Galileo and the photodiode, I don't even know if it's been translated in uh English.
No, 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 the. I don't think so, I don't.
Oh, it's not translated in English.
Probably not, no, side project.
I sh- I I should translate it in English, that's that would be my side project.
Ah. Right, right, right.
So so then I I realized, okay, no, I want to study a little bit of, you know, neuroscience, just just, yeah, no, you come neuroscience, but a little bit of neuroscience. So I moved to Milan, where I ended up getting, you know, in the in a course where Marcello was teaching.
Ah.
Marcello Massimini, and so I was like, oh, this is a person collaborating with with Giulio, and I didn't actually know because I before I.
Yeah. Mm.
And so then in that, in that moment, I kind of got more into I I T. But who's the first consciousness researcher that you you actually, because so you said you got inspired by, and then for you, you said that there wasn't anybody really working on consciousness, and then you met Lame, but.
Kind of, but uh so I I after that conference.
But then you went to I N Institute with with Kristoff, right?
Yeah, I after the conference that I just wanted to come to U S for grad school, right?
For the come?
Um.
And then I I sent on a bunch of, you know, I was rejected by lots of, you know, places, but I some, you know, still contacted with Mark Konishi in Caltech.
Yeah.
Um. Um.
And he said that after contacting with the email, he said, yeah, just come.
Mm.
Come to Caltech.
Um.
So I thought that, ah, that means that he has money to hire me as a research assistant and then help me to get the experience and things like that, right?
Ah.
Then I packed things and then brought some, you know, money and then, you know, went to the Caltech.
But nothing.
And then met with him, and he said to me, the first thing was that, you know, great that you came to here trusting my word, but I have no money.
More really.
Now, the next step for you is to find a person who can hire you.
Oh.
And then, you know, just send a bunch of email to, you know, many famous people, then probably you will find. Who who was it? The Mark Konishi, who who studied the uh auditory uh sound localization uh in A O.
Mm. Wow, okay, oh.
And then, uh, because he said that, you know, I I I thought that, okay, I I need to do that. And then I went to the, you know, L A uh library and then just, you know, went from like nine to five and then just continued to write emails.
Um.
Then, uh, one person email was actually Kristoff.
Uh-huh.
Wow.
Um.
And then be- because Kristoff actually forwarded the email to Shinshimozho, asking that, oh, who want to do what he is, yeah. And then, you know, Shin Shin said that, you know, because she he met me in Japan.
Um.
We've been eating for.
He kind of recommended. And then, uh, yeah, Kristoff like five minutes.
Ah.
And then before that, I uh studied a lot of, you know, Kristoff's, you know, writing at that time. But at that time, you know, Kristoff didn't actually write much consciousness stuff.
Mm.
Oh, really?
Yeah, except for the paper with Francis.
Yeah, 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 Francis Crick, yeah, of course.
But Francis Crick is not the Kristoff's student.
Uh-huh.
And uh it was really unclear what Kristoff was interested in.
Oh.
So after spending, at least at that time, you know, I I was very slow in reading and things like that, but you know.
Hmm.
I I could, I I tried to do as much as possible, and then I at the interview, I told him that probably at this stage, the best thing to do is to work with uh Francis Crick. For consciousness, but Francis Crick doesn't seem to take the, you know, student.
Um.
But he seems to be working only with Kristoff and you.
Um.
And so probably next best thing I can do is to work with you.
Ah.
I was super impolite, but you know, just just write this in the psych physics, and then I did it really crazy, and he liked it.
Yes, okay, okay, I see.
So at that time, I think, you know, nobody really was super kind of, you know, any kind of authority for consciousness. I I didn't think that Kristoff was an authority, and that's why I kind of, um, approached Kristoff, no.
Hmm.
It was quite quite a bit of luck, I would say.
Mm.
But you guys, at that time, there was some kind of big shot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well.
In consciousness.
May maybe not for Mateo as much.
Um.
I mean, for me, I realized that there was a lot of, on my perspective, a lot of talk.
Oh, no. Oh, good hands.
In philosophy about the problem of consciousness and consciousness was a, was a, you know, the the nineteen ninety five paper by Chalmers.
Oh.
Right, yeah.
And then the book, you know, Conscious Mind, so philosophers have been talking about conscious a lot since nineteen ninety five.
Ah.
But then until, you know, the two thousands, like that was the time where actually I I T and global work has emerged and is neuroscientific theories of consciousness. And so I realized, okay, there are these two big theories, and then identified I I T as the one that I thought was more interesting. Um, and then I remember after I finished my masters, um, uh, Marcello told me, uh, Giulio, uh, I'm going to the U S. Giulio said you should come, and I was like, I don't what, I'm a master's student, I was I was trying to find a job.
Um.
Yeah, where? Ma- Marcello was coming back, right?
Marcello was going to the U S now just for some some short period, like, yeah, and he's actually like.
Ah, okay, he was there from two thousand three to two thousand eight or something?
I don't know the the time, I don't know the time, yeah, 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 exactly.
Mm.
But came back to Milan at that time.
Yeah, yeah, he was in Milan when I met him, and then it was just for a short period, he said, you should come to Madison for like a week. And I was a master's student, I didn't, I didn't go, and I'd never met Giulio before, so I di- didn't go.
Ah, ah, ah. Ah. Hmm.
Oh, you didn't go?
No, 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 I didn't go because I never met Giulio, I I didn't even know, like, I didn't have money, I was like, so I was just master's student trying to find a PhD.
Oh. Hmm.
But I did identify that, like, you know, that these two, like, global work and I I T were sort of theories in that in that moment, and, um.
Mm. So you missed the first opportunity, you know?
I didn't miss the first opportunity, which maybe was a lucky miss, because otherwise, I may have tried to do my PhD in the U S, which would have been probably much more kind of.
There is some.
Um.
I don't know, much more intense, you know?
Mm.
Instead, what I did was I I did my PhD in Europe, in in philosophy, and, um.
Mm. That was in Oxford, right?
It was parting Italy, part in Oxford, like half and half, and then I did the 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 metaphysics of I I T, metaphysics of power and stuff. And then during my PhD, I actually visited Madison for the first time, and I met with Giulio, and I got in touch, and I started working on I I T more directly, uh.
Hmm.
And then I came as a postdoc, so I was like.
I see, that's very interesting. How how was the encounter with the conscious study Francesco?
Mm.
Um, Francesco Varela?
Mm.
Francesco Elia.
You, you, I'm sorry, yeah, you must be Francesco.
Varela.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I'm very sorry, yeah, yeah, I I know it, I know it.
She is also drunk.
I know, I know, I know, I know, I know.
Yeah, 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 I'm very sorry.
The the good thing is that tomorrow you won't remember this.
No, no, I I must remember it, I'm very sorry, yeah, yeah.
But although he called it, yeah, that's okay.
I'm 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 just kidding, there is some, um, so to me, actually, it was a little bit late encounter, um. As I think I really got motivated to study consciousness, and actually, maybe I was even, I wasn't even using the word consciousness during my master.
Um.
I did my master in Edinburgh.
Um.
And it was. Edinburgh?
Edinburgh, and it was Andy Clark at the time, I got.
Ah. Embodiment, you what what you like, right, embodiment?
Yes, 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 yes.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Andy Clark.
Yeah, you know Andy Clark.
Of course, Andy Clark, I met him.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He he was working with him.
No, no, I was not working with him, I was just a a master's student in the same department.
He was here in Japan and, uh, there was a huge earthquake.
Mm.
Ah, the Fukushima.
Just in Tokyo, the three, the March eleven.
Mm. Oh.
I I I I I've heard his lecture in Komaba campus.
Ah, Fukushima, Fukushima. The the Fukushima uh atomic uh plants, right?
Yeah, 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 something, yeah, Fukushima and the Shendai or something.
Oh.
Oh, really?
Um.
Ah, he he was then in Komaba?
He was there ha- having a lecture in Komaba, but I was really surprised because he was really calm, most calm than everyone, every Japanese ju- people.
Ah, I see.
And because, yeah, you know, Japanese people are very used to earthquake, but the Andy was the, yeah, best guy.
Yeah. Mm. Yeah, that's right.
Most embodied.
Yeah, yeah, most embodied, I was surprised, this is the pro- the this is the, yeah, philosopher, I I'm sorry for interrupting you.
With that.
Mm.
Ah, so you came from there.
Ah, yeah, yeah.
But you were interested in extended mind.
I was. Yeah, I was very interested, actually, this was even earlier than he published his first book about the digital processing, because it was twenty fifteen.
Yeah. Um. Um.
And then, so I I got really interested in this overall idea, and actually, thi- this is the the part I should not be recorded, because I want my PhD scholarship.
Um.
You wanna stop?
No, no, it's okay, I mean, at this point, it should be okay, I want my PhD scholarship with a project about extended mind.
I'm sorry.
But then, as soon as I started my PhD and I and I got, you know, so it's a bit later, you know, it's not that as an undergrad student that I got into that. There was, there were other aspects of philosophy that were interesting to me.
Um.[1470.64]
But then, I got so more in in the sort of uh functionalist sort of uh field, so to say, right?
Hmm.
But then I realized that it was completely wrong, or at least from my perspective, it was completely wrong, so I was in a little bit of a crisis.
Hmm.
Hmm.
And then I was very lucky because um Thomas Metzinger was visiting in.
Hmm. Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, he was visiting Italy in a city, not my hometown, but a city that is one or two hour by train.
Yeah.
So I went there every day for two weeks to attend his lecture, it was very nice, very motivating.
Oh. Really? Yeah, it must be, okay.
Great guy.
Oh.
Great.
And at that point, I say, okay, I should completely pivot, like rather than extended mind kind of topic, I should pivot on neuroscience of consciousness.
Okay.
Hmm.
As a, you know, philosophy of neuroscience of consciousness maybe. But then, I attended a class uh at the Department of Medicine, which was neurophysiology of consciousness.
Hmm.
And the lecturer was a professor, uh a physiologist, a neurophysiologist called uh Matteo Cherry.
Oh.
And Matteo Cherry, yeah, Matteo knows.
Matteo Cherry.
Matteo.
I know him, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like same name, but a different different person.
Hmm.
And in his lecture, he talked about I I T and actually he recommended four papers about I I T.
Hmm. Hmm.
So that he he was a philosopher?
No, 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 I'm I'm a medical doctor, yes.
Physiologist, yeah.
And he knew the I I T.
Yeah, because Matteo Cherry was working on uh hibernation and torpor, still work.
Yeah, he still work on that.
Hi- hibernation, like a bear and so on?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but he tried to induce hibernation in other mammals.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like a human.
Uh.
The non-hibernating mammals, like uh the pig?
Yeah.
The pig was one?
He tried to and they they succeed, actually.
Ha.
Because there's a gene, actually, that was shared by all mammals, but it's inactive in the non-hibernating ones.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And the idea was that you could activate it.
To activate.
And here's the trick, here's the kicker.
Yeah.
He was paced by uh the European uh Space Agency.
Space Agency.
Because inducing torpor for astronauts who have to travel to Mars is actually a very, very interesting
Space Agency. Ah.
Yeah.
Hmm.
way to preserve somebody in a minimal state of uh of yeah, 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 functions and it's uh exactly.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Ah, body.
Hmm.
Metabolism and so on.
Yeah.
And there's also all sorts of, you you might know more than me about this, but there's all sorts of interesting uh things that you can
Um.
So if you induce this type of like torpor, then the metabolism is very, very low.
Oh.
And so you put, for instance, you can inject, you can basically do ca- chem- chemotherapy by uh targeting cells that much in a much more focused way. Um and there's also apparently some uh reversion of some uh uh, you know, degeneration like Alzheimer's, all these kind of things that you can induce in this state.
Hmm.
But he was also interested in consciousness, the animals are still awake.
Hmm.
Hmm.
Like they are conscious, they just like are very, very slow, their E G also looks very different when they are in this uh look uh torpor state.
Ah.
So 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 that was he was interested in I I T for that.
No, no, and so, yeah, he talked about I I T.
It's getting super interesting.
Yeah, yeah, and actually, th- this is the 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 plot twist among the four, the four paper, I asked him, I say this I I T thing is very interesting to me, actually, you know, I I wa- I I needed to refocus my my PhD, so to say.
Oh, hmm.
Kini tichado.
And so, uh and that was likely the very beginning. And so I asked him for the literature and he actually recommended me four papers, the I I three three point O, the Nature Review on I I T, uh the Nature, I think, review on your.
That's after two thousand fifteen.
That was uh twenty seventeen, I think, about, at about that time. And your paper on what it's like to be a bat, among the first four papers that I read about I I T.
Oh, really?
So. And at at that point, I said, I I read about I I T and I say, well, I really want to understand this thing. And I very boldly, because I had zero credential, uh contacted Giulio Tononi,
Hmm. Hmm, hmm.
which did not reply to me.
Mm-hmm.
But he uh arranged a sort of interview or call, yeah, an interview with Matteo, which was a postdoc at the time.
Hmm.
Really?
Yeah.
I and actually, I I don't I don't I'm, most of the time it was like it like the gatekeeper, you know, so you talk about.
Well, I I don't I'm, most of the time it was like it like the gatekeeper, you know, so you talk about.
The crazy filter.
The immune system.
And actually, you you, I don't know if I ever told you that, but uh we were like uh we arranged the meeting on Friday for the next Monday and I spent the entire weekend studying.
Hmm. Didn't know.
Yes, 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 I was very scared of you.
Oh, I see, I see. Oh, man.
I never I never met him, I didn't know who he was, but uh it's fine.
And that was uh twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen, which was my yeah, my first year.
Ah.
Twenty eighteen.
Testing.
No, actually, that was twenty, yeah, eighteen.
Eighteen, yeah, it was my first year of course in that, yeah. I think it was eighteen.
Yeah, because I started my PhD in the fall of of twenty seventeen, so that was uh, yeah, yeah.
So this is a second round.
Ah, yeah.
Ah.
いるいるよ。
あ、いるのか？
何？食べたいと思ったけど。あ、俺もそうことしたくなる。うん。だから逃げるところがあるの？
Yeah, I love, I love.
覚えてないだから。
高校生の時まで盗んでました。揺さぶるのめ。
お金も。
自転車も。
自転車も。
自転車。
Okay,まあいいや。Then and then uh what what you are saying saying is uh Andy Clark? And then uh Thomas Metzinger?
Yeah.
And then?
And then I completely changed, the yeah, yeah, and then uh.
Then yeah, Matteo was the interviewer.
Oh.
Yeah, 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 except there was this Matteo Cherry in the between and then uh I got my interview with Matteo and then I went to Madison and uh yeah, a lot of things happened, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was partly your PhD?
Yeah, that was the beginning of my PhD, so I started with something more focused on the uh PhD in philosophy and cognition technically, but mostly philosophy. Uh and I started like a PhD on the extended mind and then I pivoted to proper uh philos- the my idea was philosophy of neuroscience of consciousness and um and I ended up focusing only on I I T because that was already.
I see.
Enough material for a PhD, I think, uh.
And then, uh after that is a fi- a history.
Yes.
And then now your turn.
Okay.
Finally.
Why do I meet? Why do I get interested in consciousness? Well, actually, I I did, I I were, I was not interested in consciousness because when I go to A S C.
Hmm.
Yeah, Kanayama and Tjiasan was so kind of frightening and Ryota always talking about so you are always, you, how can I say, sorry?
Where were, which year?
Which year? Well, when I was a PhD student.
We met in Krakow?
Krakow and also in San Diego in two thousand thirteen or something.
Did I meet with you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
San Diego?
We ate sushi together with Ryota.
Ah.
Thirteen.
Together.
Ah, I brought you to the very expensive sushi, maybe.
Not much expensive, but very Californian style sushi, like dragon, like shrimp sushi.
Really?
Hmm.
Really, ah, okay, then that's different.
Very.
Avocado, a lot of avocado in sushi.
Lot of avocado sushi, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But in San Diego, there can be a very expensive sushi, actually.
Ah, yeah, you paid for me, thank you, I didn't know that, I really thank you, I didn't know that.
But I think I got somebody there. Maybe. Okay, but anyway. So Tsuya-san.
Yeah, yeah, but yeah.
Not Tsuya-san, Tsuya.
Yeah, not Tsuya, but Tsuya.
You don't understand.
Yeah, yeah, and Ryota was always pushing me to study more and more.
Okay. Hmm.
I tried to, don't you?
He always does that, I mean, the kyopan so on, right?
That's a fat ass.
Always. Oh, really?
I don't know, it seems like that's a that's a story.
That's what what you heard, yeah.
Study about what?
Huh?
Study about Beijing, differential Beijing something or free energy something or everything.
Beijing?
Ah, not not consciousness.
Ah.
Well, related to consciousness, but at that time, the predictive coding was really in now, in there, so so he always pushing me to do something, but so I I I was so kind of, well uh consciousness study was so differ- difficult.
これで。ああ。
I cannot go to that region.
ちょっとチャレンジしてる。面白かった。
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's why.
癖が強い。
That's why I'm not much interested in Korea because yeah, people are very, yeah, pushing something.
啊。
Requiring me a lot of things.
Ah, yeah, this is very different.
What? Oh, really? But you like it?
How can you describe it?
He he says that the the it's a kind of a car in a bitching, but it's a different kind of car.
What kind of?
Hmm.
Oh, but same position, same goal position.
I don't know. I don't know.
So try it.
Yeah, i- it's very different, it's very different.
What kind of?
But the this place's name is?
Koshi.
Koshi?
Koshi is Kabrya, Kabrya.
Men, men. Menなんだっけ? Men?
Men shuron.
Men shuron.
Men, men is noodle, shu is sake, noodle sake theory.
Oh. だってメンシュロンとミシュラン似てるじゃん。
逆だよ。Reverse, objective, subjective reverse.
大丈夫ですか?
大丈夫。
あ、メンシュロンってどういう経経系?
逆にミシュランがメンシュロンを。あ、カオイズム。
ああ、そうだった。
俺聞いてよかっただろ。
そうですね、今回。
ああ。
いや、yeah, yeah, yeah, we are. That's from the Chinese.
But I assume there there will be no ramen.
Oh.
There will be ramen, there there will be, ramen will be coming, yeah.
いらな。
There will be ramen. Oh.
Oh.
You should, you should keep stomach open.
Subashi.
Ah, okay, so you need to leave.
Probably should leave soon, but.
あの。
ハレ。Half ramen or one ramen?
How how, when when do you need to leave?
Probably in twelve minutes.
うん。
あと十二分ぐらいで出なきゃいけないんですけど。咦。
It's okay, it's okay, it's okay, no, 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 no.
Next time.
Next time, next time.
彼日本に住んでるんでまた来ます。
Next time, next time.
ご飯、ご飯、ah rice.
あ、ご飯も美味しいよ。
Oh, no. No, 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 no problem, no problem, please tell him there is no problem. Please tell tell him.
カプラー麺。
The rice, rice he actually has.
Per- perfect, perfect, perfect.
Yeah. Perfect.
啊、あのご飯でお願いします。
Please tell him there is no problem.
There is no problem.
Yeah, yeah, to him, like the no, not stress about this.
But but the rice was made with the ramen soup.
Yeah, yeah.
啊、ご飯で。
Yeah, 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 that's fine, that's very nice.
Very nice ramen soup. And he can immediately give you the.
But yeah, I appreciate, I'm I'm I'm, I feel sorry because I feel this is like a heart is, you know, like the the dinner is uh and and I feel like I'm ruining his heart by leaving early, that's that's my, that's why I say there is no problem, you know.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, 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 you don't.
But that that feels really fast, like you know, last time when we checked the time was like a seven, seven forty or something.
Because he really enjoyed the meat.
Yeah, 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 meat was really good.
これ、この辺いらない。
No, 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 だい。ちょっとずつ俺楽しんでる。
この骨が美味しい。
あれ、おでん結構残ってたのに。
え、全部食べたよ。
But before, yeah, be- maybe before, like finish, you know, Francesco, if you have anything you wanted to say, but uh you forgot to say.
About the meeting, about the consciousness, about life, uh.
About life?
Life.
Life, oh.
Life or life after death?
Life after this, wow.
After death.
Death, I mean.
Totally?
Or as a scientist, or.
As a.
As a person or.
As a person, yeah.
Anything.
Hmm, as a person. I want to say that there are two kind of pleasure in life. One that is more self-direct and one that is more selfless direct. So the first kind is more like when you drink, for example, very good sake.
Hmm.
Or when you, yeah, do like eat very good food, something that is very pleasurable, that pixel that is very intense, but then it's gone.
Hmm. Hmm.
And the crazy thing about this kind of pleasure is that you cannot recall it.
Hmm.
Right?
Afterwards.
Afterwards, you cannot recall it, the experience, the pleasurable experience is simply gone.
Hmm.
So you can come again anytime.
Yes, that, but that's a different experience.
Hmm.
You cannot recall that one.
Okay.
But the other kind, the selfless, uh or, you know, the the kind of pleasure that you get from, for example, spending a very nice evening with your friends and talking and having good time together.
Hmm.
That so it is not self-direct, it's directed towards other people to sharing.
Hmm. Hmm.
That is probably less intense as a kind of pleasure, like less visceral in a sense.
Hmm. Ah. Hmm.
But it's also more long-lasting and it probably makes you happier in your life.
Hmm.
Um and also I think you can recall that, you can revive that in your mind.
Hmm.
And this actually can help you a lot when you're going through a difficult.
Hmm. Best soup ever in the world.
Ah.
Ah, you can drink it.
Yeah.
えっと、もっきりって言います。
へー、もっきり。
もっきり?
もっきり。This is formal style in Japan.
Hmm?
This is formal.
グラスに返す。
Okay.
あの入れる、それもっきりを返すって。
ああ、もっきり。
もっきり。もっきりなんですか?
もっきり is the overflow.
もっきり。
Ah, overflow, overflow, phenomenon, overflow.
And overflow, you need to, you formally drink?
Don't drink, okay.
So this I can drink.
Unlike, you know, Masafumi, I would say that you need to also drink, uh eat that peanut.
Yeah, and.
Ah, resting for.
Yeah, 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 I I ate the peanut today, so.
チョップs. Okay. Yeah, the 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 Japanese, you know, main philosophy is that you can eat everything, including the whale and, you know, everything, right?
Yeah.
あ、そうなんですか。
本当、液じゃない。
ああ。
要するに液の話になってくるの。
なるほどね。
Hmm.
So I'm the sort of lower kind of creature. Because I I drank like this, but you know, the bitter way is like this, and then drink it like this.
Oh, yeah.
Ah. Instead of pouring.
Smartっていうの? Yeah, so I'm like a.
Why?
Smartとかクール?
Why is it? So why why the overflow? What's the history behind the overflow? Like I I I saw with with some square.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh.
あ、マス?
upholders, yeah, but what what, why? Where where does it come from?
Yeah, yeah.
In Goto era? So like a service. You're like a generosity.
Ah, hmm.
That's one explanation, one tale.
Yeah.
まあ小説ありますの話ですけど。
There are many different hypothesis, uh not not a rice, but you also have a lot of things, plus soup.
Nice.
Yeah, yeah, and this is, I think is um probably fish, green onion and mint, which is.
Wait, it's not pork? Fish?
Oh, the, hi, uh the cha- chashu.
It's a pork, pork, pork.
Oh, really? Very good.
Yeah, but you know, it's sometimes I I have done, sometimes it's very inverted Korea, you know.
No.
はい、両両分いたさんです。
Yeah.
Very good.
So now you're officially inverted Korea.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's it's really ridiculous, right?
Well, if you if you give to somebody something and it's just a taste, it's actually very hard to, it's impenetrable, sometimes it's impenetrable, you can't really connect it.
You don't see.
Yeah. No.
Yeah. In in fact, I I did want to do this, you know, taste similarity experiment.
Yeah, this would be very complex.
With the. Yeah, and also wine, you know, sommelier, and wine, uh novice.
Yeah, it is.
But like yeah, with the with the Nishonshu, you you said it just tastes different, but you weren't really able to explain.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Right.
It was like Francesco gave a perfect explanation that I a hundred percent resonated with about the difference between the three ones and uh.
Right.
Oh, really?
Yeah, 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 that's uh what do you think? I mean, do you think it's real, like you can perceive different things?
So this differs from, you know, Giulio's also opinion, actually, we discussed it, actually.
Oh, hmm.
Yeah. Yeah.
I I think both wine and sake.
Hmm.
If you do the similarity experiment with the novice and the professional.
Hmm.
Probably it's gonna be similar.
Similar?
Oh.
ああ。
I think, if it's a direct phenomenon.
Uh-huh.
But once you do this, start to emphasize more on the con- like, like you know, drink, like you know, let's say one mi- one C C.
Oh, 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 oh.
Hmm.
Yeah, yeah.
Five seconds, one C C, five seconds, then the most of the similarity judgment comes from the conceptual.
Yeah, memory.
Hmm, I see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then.
Hmm.
Uh, it's more to do with the memory rather than phenomena.
Yeah, 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 okay, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then, the difference in terms of, you know, the expertise actually starts to become really huge.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay.
But if you drink like a little bit, like five hundred uh uh uh, you know, the C C, oh no, 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 zero point five C C.
Hmm.
And then zero point five C C without much, you know, kind of your delay.
Yeah, yeah. Priming and delay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and then just give the, you know, the the similarity within two seconds intuitively. Probably everybody will be more similar. I think. In color, uh so that this is actually interesting thing about natural glory, actually.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So in color, the.
I completely understand.
Language vocabulary correlates with the color vocabulary correlates with the memory, but not the discriminability.
Hmm.
So if you know more color names, it's better for the color naming task, but it's not at all, you know, really, you know, color discriminability at all.
I, yeah, okay, okay. Oh, I see. Oh, okay, 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 okay.
Yeah.
Now I understand.
Yeah.
But isn't it, do you think it's modality specific, like is there some modalities that you can?
Hmm.
So you're basically saying every modality, the discriminability is is the baseline is the same, you can learn more concepts.
That's really like a empirical question.
That's one one way to think about it, exactly.
Yeah, a big question.
The other one is that I agree with color, I don't think people can see more shades when they get trained, but with taste and smell maybe.
Hmm.
It's sound, it it feels like you can taste different things, more depth of, you know, more nuance with training.
Hmm. But maybe is the same as describing more shapes of color, yeah.
Maybe, and the point is, do you just, I mean, it sounds weird, right, that you have a better discriminability because your your sensory capacities increase, like your receptors are are what they are and uh the neural connections that you react to the receptors.
Yeah, much to consider, much to consider.
Right?
Yeah, of course, can I take this? Hmm.
Okay.
Of course.
Okay, what's this? Uh, name card?
No.
Okay.
You can come here again, anytime.
I got the.
But I wonder, so I wonder if it's, you can learn more color concepts and then you are able to remember much better. Like if you're a fashion, you know, expert, then you can describe a shade very precisely and remember then the that shade, you know, it of of the hue, specific hue is but you can still see the the discriminability with that hues is the same, and and it's the same with wine connoisseur, you just learn more concepts.
Hmm.
But you are able all along to tell the difference, but I am not sure, like for for taste, especially wine, I genuinely, I am not sure.
Yeah.
I think you can learn to discriminate more, more tastes with experience.
Hmm. Oh.
I I I think that's a really like an excellent kind of a kobo han, you know, kind of an idea.
嗯。嗯。
And I I wanna say that also, you know, to the YouTube audience, you know, if there's any at this stage.
Okay, okay.
But like a taste and also smell? Car. まだ, do you wanna eat, right?
ラーメンある。買えられる方が一人。
じゃ、かるの？ 今のところいくらですか?
多分一人一人で飲んだ酒。
それはある方で、あの Francescoは。
うん。あ、そうする、そうしますか？そうしますか？
So so far, we we count on a price and you pay.
But you know, Muneeki, Muneeki drinker, so, not only Muneeki, but everyone's.
That's all money.
Okay, okay, I was, because at at some moment, I was so surprised, Muneeki drinks so much beer.
That is all money. Oh, Miki.
You know, right?
But he drinks a lot, he drinks a lot of beer, you know, all of this is his.
No, not. Yeah. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight beer!
Yeah. Yeah. What?
Only by Muneeki.
Yeah.
You don't know.
Not actually.
It's okay, but it's cheaper than sake.
Hmm.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, I mean, we we, I I'll do this, yeah, I'll cover that.
Okay, okay. Okay, we will split. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What? Well, kobo han will cover it. Meeting with a researcher who is collaborating with Santri.
Mmm. Oh, yeah, you posted.
Hmm.
That's what you posted in the Slack?
No, 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 uh, uh, maybe I.
You don't? This is next great TR, Santri?
Santri? Or really?
I mean, I don't know, probably they have many offices, but that, there is one big office.
Yeah, there is a, yeah, yeah, yeah. I think the main, the main, see, I talked to a person in Kyoto who is an Italian, who has a, a tea house.
Seven thousand and four hundred for you.
So we'll be later, yeah.
いいよ。大丈夫です。美味しかった。まあ、I'll pay later.
Yeah.
いやいや、絶対面白い。これはいいや。
マンされたりしないでください。
It is fine.
あ、じゃ、とりあえず、とりあえずっていう感じで。
Seven thousand is fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, no, no, I can, just one moment.
But this is interesting. This is a live, live YouTube.
Right, uh, wait, wait. Okay.
あ、seven thousandに。
Yeah.
Yeah, seven thousand is fine. I, I'll pay for that, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
いいですよ。七千円でいいです。はい。
あ、あ、七千円でいい?
はい。あの、あとで、あの、僕が払います。
It's giving you a.
Arigatou gozaimasu. Arigatou gozaimasu.
I'm ten year, so don't worry about that.
She, she pays because she, she's in the ten years.
Yeah, I'm hired by.
あ、はいはい。
で、あとでみんなで合算して。
はいはい。
Okay, okay.
Sorry.
大丈夫ですね。京都に帰るもんね。
でも八時四十分で行ってませんでしたっけ?
うわ、だから、だから走るんじゃないか?
八時四十分に駒場?
違う、なんか東、東京に来るじゃないか。
八時四十分。
ほら、ほら、ライブで。Francesca払ってる。
払ってる。
受けるな、これ。
受けるね。誰か見てますか?
ほら、ライブの。Francesca is paying.
面白いね。柴田さん映った方がいいとかありますか? お店の宣伝に。あ、ごめん。
あ、いや、いいです。
あ、言わない方が良かったです。
いや、Sさんにした方がいいですか?
いや、まあまあ、あの、下の名前入れてなしみまん。
そうだよ。下の名前ないもんね。
ごめんなさい。じゃあ、今度からなんか。
あの、ちょっと僕も人にいろいろ狙われる身なので。
あ、えっ!
なぜかそれ。なんですか?
Somebody is shooting back him. What?
She, 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 yeah. Yeah, like Trump.
Yeah, like Trump.
I don't know.
He is really famous, popular in Japan.
Popular or not, I don't know, but he is a target.
Ah, I'm, maybe I'm popular.
Uh, maybe.
But within Japan, you know, if you say something wrong, then, uh, people start to get, you know, kind of attacking you quite often, right?
Okay, okay. So let's call him S-san.
Yeah, S-san.
S-san.
S-bata-san.
So you only have four minutes?
Yeah.
Are you okay?
Yeah, 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 no, but I have to leave, uh, from here at four.
Ah, okay, okay, okay.
It is already forty.
Yeah.
Eight forty, are you all right?
I'm, I'm also tempted to take the one at five AM.
Okay, okay.
Whoa, no, no, dude, that's, that's extreme.
I know, I know, it should, but tomorrow, tomorrow is also Saturday.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But that's extreme.
But I, I remember a lot of fun.
That's extreme, yeah, right.
But may, maybe it's a bit extreme, I don't know.
Your dar- girlfriend is waiting.
That's okay.
Yeah.
I, I don't think she's waiting for me tonight. But. Tomorrow, maybe. Okay, so.
Francesco-san.
Mateo.
Nice to meet you again.
Mi raccomando, stammi bene, facci something in live YouTube.
It's, uh, it's strange.
Francesco-san! Thank you!
Very nice to meet you again, and, um.
See you again in next, in CC or with meeting.
Wow, maybe, yeah, maybe, so, yeah, yeah.
Round meeting. If it happens in October.
沖縄。
Yes, yes, also.
沖縄。
Muneeki?
Yeah, let's meet in Zoom.
Yes, absolutely, I represent, and have a safe trip back to US.
Yes, yes, together, yeah, safe with you.
I know. Say, take care.
I enjoy it. Thank you for joining us.
Then, now, I will see you.
In, uh, on Tuesday or something.
Yes. No, actually, next week.
啊，Tuesday, very.
No, not next week. I, I'll be busy.
Yeah, yeah, the, the week after. Yeah, 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 exactly, exactly.
The week after. No, the week after is also, I, I'll be on plane. So, two, two, three weeks.
What? On, on the eight, no, on the eighteenth.
That's all, I, I'm on plane. But I don't.
大丈夫みたいな感じ。
On Monday.
On Monday, very soon.
No, no, no.
In face-to-face.
On, on Monday, we canceled our meeting.
No, we, we will meet.
No, we don't. We canceled the meeting on Monday and we have it on the eighteenth.
But, by the way, are you all right with the train?
Yes, 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 yes.
Yeah, maybe we can, yeah, we should, we should discuss that.
Oh, yes, also. Arigatou gozaimasu. Goichi sou samashita.
はい、どうも。Goichi sou samashita.
Safe travels.
Safe travels!
Get that a shy.
Now.
bon voyage!
Oh, 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 when you leave Japan?
Twenty or nineteenth or twenty-first, or something like that.
あー。You have a twenty-fourth.
There's a, something.
But, you, you let me know when you are eighty R, then everywhere.
I'm not definite, yeah.
Oh, but you, you're gonna come, dude?
Yeah, I'll come there.
Okay, okay. We, we might whenever, it's good for you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Hmm, hmm.
いいですね。
いいですね.
Nao-san have a lot of time.
And, uh, probably, you should come.
Come.
What?
What, what about, what about Muneeki-san taking this place?
Squish, some color?
Comes, yeah.
Just shifting, uh, shifting. Ah, shifting, good, good idea.
This is very strange.
By the way!
Alright, you.
Yeah.
Take care, bye-bye.
Take care! Bon voyage!
Bye. Come on.
Thank you.
This place is really great.
Really?
Yeah.
So you should know about this place, you know?
Bye-bye. Uh.
S-bata-san. 取られない、取られない。
あ、全然。だって、あんまほとんど見てないですよ。
食べログみたいなことしない。
あ、あ、全然全然。
もうほとんどもうめちゃめちゃマイナーな人しか見てないんですよ。
ここ、こういうシャツネットplaceにしましょう。入れてもいい。
あ、構いません。店舗名。
で、柴田、あ、S-bata-san。
S-bata-san?
あ、でもS-bata。S-sanさん。天守、天守。
でも、あの、店の名前はいいんですよね?
あ、店の名前。
Because he is always complaining about the restaurant is very bad. I, I, how can I say? なんかいつも、なんかね。あの、天守様。天守様。えー、can you translate it to him? Because it's really difficult to say.
Masahumi said.
Masahumi.
Something, right, already?
What did he say?
The, you know, this place is very interesting.
Yeah, but.
The, the chef complains a lot.
Ah, you said that, Masahumi? Okay, okay, I didn't hear that. So, he doesn't complain?
Yeah, but I don't know. I mean, I, it, it, you know, he actually, you know, booked this place for us entirely.
He's always speaking. Yeah. Yeah, very nice person.
And it's amazing.
Because, you know, this person actually asked for it.
Hmm, that's amazing.
It's amazing, and also it's very calm, right? Excellent for the YouTube, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Very intimate, yeah, perfect, perfect.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
The angle, by the way, works very well. Like, I thought if you were in a row, but the angle, yeah, it's like perfect.
Right, yeah, yeah. Right.
So, we can come again if he, he, Tenshu-san is all right.
いや、じゃない。これもう出しあります。
Yeah.
Is it, this?
If the restaurant becomes popular, I'm really happy.
We can put it in the description of the video.
あ、これやつ。
まあ、これちょっとあれにしますわ。あの、表紙に。
え、本当?
それがまあ、ここに。
Because I love this restaurant. I always hoping that this restaurant.
Yes.
Yeah, lasting forever. すいません。
こういうことやっても悪い気にならないですか?
悪い、悪ガキだよ。
そうなんだな。
Every night, normally, yes.
これでどうだ?
Publicly open for everybody, but that's the, we're occupying that place.
俺の声は結構でかいからね。あんま関係ないんだよ。
でかいですよね。
そうなんだ。でかいんで。いつもね。だからこの前のね、あの、last time, in a, you know, we, we already did that YouTube, right, in a grand meeting. With Shinji, not, not Shinji.
Sho-san?
Sho, Sho, Shinoto and so on. But then, my, my father actually watched it, and then he complained that, you know, my voice is too loud.
Really?
Your father watched it?
Yeah.
あ、very, very good relationship.
He seemed, he seemed to watch the video.
It's, it's hard to know in advance. He watches. I couldn't hear the Saigo-san's voice there.
Because.
Yeah, I, I also thought that. No, I asked her. Yeah, us.
Because he walks so loudly?
We shouldn't talk about that. Uh, us, yeah. Us, what?
Us.
Hmm?
You don't have to.
Asshole, asshole. Ah!
In, in Chinese character, it looks like this.
No, no, no!
Yone da?
Yone.
Huh?
This, this, this is a shape.
Yeah, because we.
Yeah, 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 ah, okay, okay, okay. I remember that, yeah, no, 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 not, I remember that, not, not Masahisan's idea, but your idea. I remember, I remember.
You have to explain it from the first. Yeah, you!
But I attribute that to her.
Her, ah.
You have to explain it from the beginning.
Yeah.
Beginning of asshole.
Well, I, we are talking about explain, e- expression, expression or expressing ourselves. Like, by, uh, novel, writing a novel, or writing some, some drawing, some picture. It is like, uh, showing myself to audience, to what, the world. It is like, uh.
She, she writes poem. And also novel.
Ah, okay.
No, no, poem is written by Shu.
啊、京子。
京子さん。
And so, Saigo-san.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But it's like something like showing your ass in the audience, because, yeah, yeah, yeah.
当然。It feels like naked, right?
Yeah, 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 naked, yeah, yeah.
That's what I see.
And Kyoko was saying, actually, Kyoko, maybe Kyoko was the first to talk about.
Yeah, maybe.
You know, showing the poem on the web feels like, you know, showing asshole to the everybody.
No, 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 it's me, it's me.
Ah, you are right. She agreed, maybe. You wanted to show asshole.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, 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 not actually, but it's like being naked, yeah.
Yeah, 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 but in metaphorically, metaphorically.
Not actual, but hypothetical, this, you know, IIT.
then then you know then
actual quality
Tchuya said the shape of Yoneda is something like asshole he is the worst
that's a similarity experiment
yeah it is
no 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 not experiment
you have weird weird thoughts
yeah Yone
you are the guilty
yeah I'm guilty
yeah
but also Yoneda Rema corresponds to
yeah yeah also then
A A K A K
the Yoneda Rema becomes something like yeah very dirty word
嗯
it's not dirty
嗯
it's sacred
sacred okay sacred
is 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 he still alive Yoneda still alive alive
no he is dead completely dead completely dead no chance of recovery
he never imagined it
he is completely destroyed from this world
okay okay so there's no chance for him to recover but you are
there's nothing no molecules of Yoneda
because of time or because of process of how he died
he never imagined it
I don't know I it's it's weird but if I if I if I if I tell
why you can't think that at all
to Japanese people like you know equal that somebody dies completely
嗯
it seems like they are shocked
yeah 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 yeah
because of
I don't know but you know I'm testing I'm testing these people
I I swear
well because of how of persistent like like life after death or like
probably
some religions
you know so like you know let's say you know Ike- Ikegami-san Ikegami-san right now he's alive right today
no he never died
no see like this he he's gonna be dead in at least like fifty years
嗯
right
嗯
I don't think so
or sixty years I mean he's sixty five
no I don't think so no I don't think so
and then the longest people longest uh uh uh
no 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 no
recorded
recorded hundred and nineteen or something right
he never died
so let's say you know
forty forty years
yeah but on average you know based on also his skin color and so on he's not gonna die ah he's gonna live like more than thirty or forty years my guess
嗯
and then you you deny it
嗯
right
yeah yeah yeah
but let's say if he dies right tomorrow
if
and then I say that you know Ikegami-san is completely dead
嗯
then you will be shocked or you 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 deny it no 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 he's not completely dead
of course yeah 嗯
what does it mean
well is it because there is some like for instance memories or people remember or he still lives in the what he did for the the world or or something like that
嗯
or or the spirit goes on or like
what what do you think
sorry
so Ikegami-san's uh spirit will continue to live is that why you deny his complete death
well that's what I'm always wondering about but you know the artist Shusaku Arakawa
who
Arakawa Shusaku
I know him
yeah he's the
Shusaku Arakawa
he's the most famous artist in Japan and he was a friend of Takashi Ikegami
哦
and but he said I will never die and he his masterpiece
you will never
嗯
Matsuda-san
no
who 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 is I will never
no I is Shusaku Arakawa
啊Shusaku
I never died and his masterpiece was well named as a children who never died
嗯
so and he made a very nice 建筑物って何て言うんだっけ
architecture
architecture in Mita- Mita- City and also in Nagoya City and well I trust his words but he died so I was really shocked about his die death and Takashi gave a lecture to uh what the care to yeah kind of how how can I say for for him
yeah yeah after he's yeah 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 yeah
tribute
after his death
yeah
so I I was really shocked but I couldn't understand very well yet about his die death because I don't understand what is life and what is what is death still
but from from uh maybe you must have talked about this tutorial right I mean uh this this is getting interesting but
嗯
death in IIT is probably I I think you know you will probably like it actually like IIT for the first time for you
嗯 IIT
my guess right is that in IIT you live forever
yeah 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 I I see
in a sense in a sense I think
okay
what sense
I love it
like a from intrinsic point of view
嗯嗯
somebody's death is not a death as long as it lives in your consciousness right I mean if you can't distinguish between your somebody's physical death and as a mental death
啊
嗯嗯嗯 that's it
I mean it it means that also i- in a sense that if I forget completely about somebody
I see
yeah
啊
that is exactly the same as a death physical death as well right
嗯嗯嗯 yeah well so so the interesting thing about IIT is that so if what I am is a cause of structure it's my experience right also the way in which I think all my ideas all my passions what I love these are all contents of my experience it's they characterize me as a person and I am this experience right and so if you share some of these passions and ideas then there is part of your cause of structure there is similar to part of my cause of structure right and that's the qualia structure there's a lot of similarity so if when my cause of structure disappears the closest thing is something in your cause of structure that is very similar to what I was right
嗯嗯嗯
so that's how you can live on
嗯
by having other people sharing in their experience something that was you
嗯
嗯
right so that's one way which you can sort of like live on um as part of somebody else's experience but like we were talking about today every moment of experience somehow your experience changes and so you
嗯
how can you say that you are the same as as you were yesterday
嗯
or five years ago or twenty years ago
嗯
what's the same it's do you think about the problem of uh like persistence of consciousness
yeah persistence memory self identity this is something that also needs to be written about IIT right
嗯
I mean it's kind of implicit but somebody like you you know together with a sort of theoretical or in a philosophical perspective to contrast with the IIT perspective like a idea about you know declarative memory or meaning of life
嗯
from IIT perspective or not IIT but intrinsic perspective more broadly
嗯
needs to be said I mean the 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 death you know I I told you know you like completely dead and it's kind of shocking
嗯
嗯
that's because there is something you know intrinsically it doesn't make sense
嗯
to talk about you know your mother or my father
don't talk about it
is gonna be totally dead then ah it's like shocking
嗯
a little bit
but physically or objectively it is completely true
嗯哼
嗯嗯
but you know there is something really wrong about it that's because you know there's at least intrinsically my memory about him is there
嗯
and there is there must be some kind of scientific theory about it I think why it feel it feels weird or wrong to talk about you know total death
嗯
about somebody
so so
no it doesn't make sense to your idea
yeah yeah I was initially thinking about you were just joking making us laugh
yeah
because that's a you know the famous joke by Hito Masoto
啊
yeah he liked a totally dead a kumpuk
嗯
yeah so that I was thinking that you are trying to
no the man Hito Masoto is a philosopher I would say not only comedian I also respect him
啊he is a guilty
so so wait wait what is the joke like what does it mean what's the joke
yeah yeah actually the he uh Hito Masoto is a famous comedian in Japan and he's using the word like a complete death
嗯
嗯
I mean the actually that his grandmother completely dead
啊
and that that make audience laugh
just because it's a bit
because that doesn't make sense at all for the complete
absurd absurd yeah yeah
but he ever said
right just completely
she's completely die
right right right
yeah completely
like partially die yeah what is it I see I see
but death is actually complete right always
yes
but you know if you make explicit it feels like something weird
yes it's weird yes
yeah so you so you thought I I'm kind of I'm serious actually wha- what do you think about it
yeah actually the I I don't feel any you know the sorry about that and I I don't feel any you know the sadness about that because the death is not related to me actually the aft- you know the consciousness after death doesn't you you know the make make sense at all for me
really
right right actually the I'm only you know the concerning about the consciousness right now or future
哦
a little bit you know the one year or two years or any consciousness after death
哦
doesn't make sense at all and I don't need to think about that
嗯 I see that that's very interesting you know this is the moment that I finally feel like this is a really great recall
in my in my in my opinion
when you become super famous at a Nobel moment and then you know today is the time that you said that you know
right right
the the death doesn't make sense
actually I actually the yeah if there's there's no pain at all I can die anytime
good
yeah
I I I want to die anytime
because just it doesn't
you want to die anytime
but because for you it does what what's the difference between dying now and dying in ten years there's no difference for you
no no difference at all
for you
really
really
for what
I never die
you will die
no no I never die never die
yes you will 那那you know that's something that I wanted to talk today actually with you so you because you said that you know there's a she actually made a really provocative statement uh during the grand meeting which is that you know uh to she asked me Tchuya-san what do you wanna do when you become grown up or you know when I grow become a grown up I will do this and that and that
I will become a pretty girl pretty girl
so she doesn't feel
when is that
so she yeah she doesn't you know consider she is a you know grown up yes
when when is it you're not when will you be a grown up
when in future future
but when
in future
where
you know
so it will never happen because you can only live in the present
time you know time is not aligned linearly
嗯嗯
but no nonlinear because I'm a philosopher of nonlin- no I'm a psych how can I say
right
psychologist no
嗯
psychologist
ph- physicist
嗯
nonlinear physicist actually
嗯嗯
right
so I believe nonlinear alignment of time
that's fine
in future nobody knows it's chaos
but when is you when you
in future
no you are already
no
yes
no
you are only have kid you are married you are responsible you are professor
but so I think it's like
no 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 you don't have to say that
yes you are
I don't believe it
you don't believe it but you are believed or regarded as an adult by other people
no 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 you know the philosophy of cool empty
emptiness okay like a container
you you read you just read about the no ourselves
right right you don't have a self
Buddhism so no nothing nothing e- everything is empty
嗯
right
嗯ne- nineteen nineteen in your philosophy nineteen nineteen
yeah
so yeah
right
everything is dream of yourself you don't have to believe anything
yeah so from yeah okay intrinsically
so you can choose 嗯
you know you yourself may not consider you yourself as an adult
I wrote the I wrote a novel about it
never never becoming adult
no ne- never
but
I I just I just recently I know there that kind of thing
there 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 are two things there there are two different things right one is that intrinsic perspective and then another is that
no no physical no physical entity
so you are com- hundred percent intrinsic
yeah yeah of course why not
but I think intrinsic perspective should also ex- uh you know respect that intrinsic perspective of others
you know
嗯
in true
which is the intrinsic perspective
you don't have to have any extrinsic something
but that that that's that's a sort of self uh sort of you know send too too much self center
everything is cool
so 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 how do you combine the
too much self center why not everything should be self-centered that's what the Buddhism said
yeah that's right 嗯嗯so
I'm I'm sorry
啊no no 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 I agree actually
嗯yeah yeah yeah
so there is I think in IIT now we are getting to the point where we are crossing some
嗯嗯
uh boundaries into unexplored territory but um so are you familiar with Parmenides Parmenides said
Parmenides a Greek philosopher
Parmenides
Greek philosopher he said what is is and cannot not be
啊
what is not is not and it cannot be
嗯
嗯
what is the zeroth axiom of I IIT experience exists right so if I tell you your experience will not exist
嗯
is this conceivable for you that you will not exist
right right
so so you ask yourself if I told you during you know when you fall asleep right do you you never experience not being conscious because that's inconceivable it's contradictory for you to experience not being conscious right
嗯嗯嗯嗯
so why do you know that you weren't conscious at a certain point because other people tell you well it's still in your bed and I saw it and you just don't remember what happened you just
嗯
fall asleep and then wake up right but you could say from my intrinsic perspective there's no such thing as me being unconscious this is just it doesn't make any sense because for me
嗯
the entire existence of the universe
嗯
is me being conscious right so you could argue
嗯嗯
you could argue
嗯
death is impossible for from your intrinsic perspective right there's no s- how can what does it mean to not exist right
啊yeah yeah
it it's just impossible
yeah I understand
so so you're saying yeah so you're saying
yeah everything is my world
yeah the moment I die well I die for other people but how can I die for myself how can my consciousness stop existing
嗯 yeah I never will die
that doesn't make any sense
yeah and you know yeah researchers a lot of researchers didn't talked about Kolya
嗯哼
but I just realized any researchers
嗯哼
do you wanna anything like shochu or nihonshu
yeah yeah and e- every spirit does like gin grappa rum everything
嗯 what are you drinking shochu
飲み方どうしますか
shochu okay let's try shochu but uh emo shochu
a lot of emo ah you know very well about shochu
emo shochu hi emo shochu
emo shochu
お願いします
あの
私はなんかえっとあの
rock
シュワシュワ系で
tan san
tan san
はいシュワシュワで
tan san あのさっぱりねえっと酸っぱいまではいかない
さっぱり酸っぱいがいいです
酸っぱくても構わないないあの砂糖水みたいなやつあのかき氷のシロップみたいなやつ
そうじゃない酸っぱくないじゃんそれ
ブルーハワイじゃない
違うそれ甘いじゃん
蜂蜜みたいなやつ
カボンだ yeah actually the carbonated
こんな骨シャボツいう動画あります
黒蜜みたいな黒バト
啊right
納豆
嗯嗯
lemon
嗯
酸っぱい酸っぱい
酸っぱい
酸っぱい
酸っぱい has some sound symbolism
酸っぱい
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 啊
触り
好きですか酸っぱい好きですか
酸っぱい好きです
好きです
because I don't like something sweet because
no okay okay
yeah
嗯
嗯 yeah I don't know how to say it in English but yeah my family have some shouldn't have a lot of sugar
嗯
the disease I don't I don't know the name
yeah a diabetes
diabetes so I I shouldn't take a lot
啊same
okay
second type diabetes
I no I'm not I I'm not took that disease yet but I I'm
your family is also you know that
my grandfather
two types the first type and the second type
啊I I I have no idea but my father ah my grandfather was something like that so I'm I'm very cautious about sugar
so do you like sour more
yeah yeah yeah
as a taste 嗯 I see I see
are you alright about the time
no time is you know infinite
okay
I don't know I I actually if I can come go back to home actually
me too
but
indeed
where are you going
uh my home
so wait not in Tokyo
not in Tokyo
啊
what where
but I I tend to actually like to walk
yeah but
from the station to my home
okay
so leave at the last
my home means are you staying in a hotel
no
your home
and then
it's very far like outside of Tokyo
啊
yeah so it seems like my last one is at nine fifty
you said Yokohama
あありがとうございます
nine fifty so you're going to Yokohama
Ofuna
Yokohama
so
ありがとうございますいただきます
Ofuna emo shochu
emo shochu
emo shochuお願いします
what kind of emo do you like
啊
and then go to my place
tomorrow I have to go to Sanriyo Puro Ran
no no no
I am very busy
and then go where I'll play
I I have nothing
okay
I have nothing
shall we go together to Puro Ran
Puro Ran
with my family
なんでだよなんでだよ Killer これってちょっとはちょおかしいよねほんと
なんで
自由だshe's so free
嗯
because I like to increase the number of fan of Sanriyo
嗯
Sanriyo oh
yeah but I I so that 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 back to the original topic right you think that you never will become an adult
yeah
you are continuously to be the sort of young girl right
yeah yeah yes
you are continue to be otome
why do you know that
you said that
I believe the song this is a song of my melody
yeah
I believe it because my religious
but okay but uh my religion is that everybody dies
嗯 that's your opinion
I mean it's not a religion it's a fact
that's what you think
I mean
ありがとうございます
at least you know everybody
but I believe Shusaku Arakawa and Takashi Doi or study of or study of who cares that 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 at that time I to I thought who cares about Kolya who cares about consciousness I just yeah interested
but you are interested in synesthesia right
yeah of course I
so that's really weird to me
sinesthesia and I love
so you are interested in behavior of the synesthetes
I I really so much about no no wait I I I yeah of course I love synesthesia I love Takashi and I love some some other people but I I had something very but uh something but very but feeling about Kolya but now I was yeah my proposal was accepted as a Kolya P I then my mind changed a lot
but a little bit uh what 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 is your interest about the synesthesia synesthesia is a behavior
no 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 phenomenology
synesthesia is a brain synesthesia is a phenomenology
phenomenology completely like in phenomenology
but the death of synesthesia of the
yeah yeah yeah
Kolya and synesthesia
yeah yeah at that time then I was very interested in Kolya but before you talked about consciousness rather than Kolya so I for me co- consciousness study is something like attention or something like very yeah something anesthesia state or yeah anesthesia anesthesia sleep or yeah illusion uh illusion
anesthesia or sleep or or seizure gang
no 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 yeah something
that was I was trying to say I think by saying qualia structures i- is it it seems like your story is that you were interested in these things but from many different aspect like cognitive aspect like functional aspects and then of course in the back of your mind you were interested in the experience
yeah yeah yeah
but now saying I'm interested in qualia structures that put a label on a research topic that now
嗯
that's what you said in the beginning
yeah I strongly believe that a lot of people
yeah yeah
I see
嗯
I like that
had the intuition that they were really interested in 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 experience but they they couldn't verbalize it in this way
yeah yeah
right
嗯 yeah yeah
right right right
right and in this sense you can say you don't have to change your research topic but you can make the connection to consciousness more explicit because you're like
right right
嗯
this is a piece of the structure of experience and I am already studying and I'm studying it not because of some functional you know real experience
嗯
right right
嗯
right right
and that is is interesting you know
嗯
yeah maybe I should get the prize for that to make to make the sort of the entry to the Kolya structure more accessible to
while the structure
嗯
yeah so
the people
you know like for instance David Chalmers by his own admission he said the hard problem wasn't new
嗯
嗯
like a lot of people already realized it was such a thing as their problem but putting a name on it
yeah 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 I see 嗯啊
created a field created like converge like people could talk about this thing naming it right and I think this is a is a little bit is a little like the
yeah 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 嗯
like that yeah I see
yeah yeah
yeah
do you agree
嗯 I completely agree with
but actually Takashi doesn't agree that uh agree with that idea because
he doesn't understand it
yeah what does it want
because actually the even though we are successful in the explaining explaining about uh narrow Korea for example
嗯
嗯
and it is not you know the ex- related to the broad Korea
嗯
嗯
that's his claim so that that's possible I feel
but you know Kolya structure does include the by you know broad Korea as an our part of that it's gonna
right 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 but what we are talking about uh yeah you know the narrow Korea so that that's why he was you know the frustrated
I mean i- it's a starting point right you know we started off with a Kolya structure B
嗯
right
and then now you know since last year Kolya structure became A
嗯
and for the five years we do this right
but what do you mean B A what was
嗯
B is just three years and then counting it was two point five years and then there I started with you know Nomaki Ko and so you know
啊
嗯嗯
and yeah that's why you know they talked about it right
yeah I really like the story
two stories
yeah
and then it was also Hayato was there but he was kind of you know ah interested with others and then you know after we got the B
嗯 yeah yeah
separate yeah
uh Hayato and also Steve and also uh Yusuke Morikuchi
uh Steven
were yeah Steve uh Felix were others
I really like Morikuchi-san
I see I see
and then uh we did a quite a good you know progress over two point five years and then we you know applied for the A and then we get in
yeah why did you become a friend of Morikuchi-san I really love him
Morikuchi-san is a part of the Saki Gake
I really okay
uh in the same uh year as me and then um Saki Gake is a kind of Japanese you know fellowship kind of scheme
okay okay I see yeah
of the same generation uh kind of same same generation but a various
okay okay
嗯嗯
and then
yeah
and I I got to know him uh he's studying cognitive you know development
啊 嗯yeah his research is really very nice
and then including
about in how can say I'm always forget the name
what
imaginary companion imaginary friend or something
yeah imaginary companion
啊wow
personified objects like puppets
嗯
children put a lot of
yeah but for for me like Morikuchi-san and also uh Masafumi
Hikako Hikako 嗯
is like a defender of our Sakkari
啊see
嗯
okay
and Makiko is like a forward
啊okay
I see I'm like offensive heart I'm like offensive half.
Yeah.
And then Hayato is like a, I don't know, maybe. Libero.
Yeah.
And Steve is also like also kind of defensive half or something like that. And then that's a sort of team composition. And so Masahumi and the Yusuke is always like defending that, you know, Makiko and I tries to, you know.
Attack.
Attack. And then, you know, he they they are covering, right? And then we added more people.
Hmm.
Balancing across different kind of offensive as a defensive kind of component.
I like the story.
Actually, actually, the his frustration is that if the Korea structure approach is should be successful in explaining uh broad Korea as well. Then why don't we start with the broad Korea for the first time? So that that he, that's his frustration.
I have such a strong opinion on this, but maybe I'm not seeing, like, I'm genuinely curious to know whether you think you can side study broad Kolya. Without studying narrow Kolya. I don't think so. I think it's just impossible.
Mm.
And therefore, I don't understand this type of objection. Because to me, there is no way to approach broad Kolya without approaching narrow Kolya, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But they're they're the kind of complex, complexity physics physics kind of origin, right, you guys? Like a uh chaos theory and also the, wha- what's the theory that you, a catastrophe theory.
Sure, sure, okay, so.
And thi- these kind of, you know, theory in the physics, they are, you know, kind of, you know, starting from there, that kind of perspective.
Yeah, but so, I mean, I come from I T and in I T integration, it's like, I'm not saying, you know, an experience. Like if I experience red within the context of my experience right now and then I experience red within the context of my experience later. Of course, these are two different experiences, right?
Right.
But I I don't understand how to characterize experience if not as a structure that has components that are narrow core.
Right.
That's the part it is. I mean, but but maybe it's um, maybe it's short-sightedness, maybe there's something, what's happening here?
Your idea is more of the intuition, right, no?
Hmm.
Or is there some kind of theoretical kind of, you know, justification that, you know, you have to start from the.
Is it very sour? Super sour?
They're very like Nihonshu.
Your face was really expressing sourness. Super sour?
No, no.
Super sour, but very lo- more like Nihonshu, it is made by Nihonshu.
Can I try? Do you mind? Take so much.
Yeah, if you don't.
But actually, the actually, the he's a physicist.
What? This is very sour.
But this is tastes like more like Nihonshu.
And even after the we uh successful in describing the, you know, the.
It, no, no, it is made by Nihonshu.
Dynamics of the molecule it's there, then we cannot explain the transition be- between the liquid and the.
It's amazing.
Trans- phase transition.
Right, right, right.
Fermentation.
Fermentation.
Super interesting, it's like the citrusiest, most alcoholic thing I haven't tried. That is not like limonchello, have you tried limonchello, like the sort of?
No, 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 limonchello, but super.
Exactly, exactly, but it is very, very, very interesting.
Yeah, you should try it.
Wow, okay.
Wow, you should try it next.
That's his frustration, I feel. But I'm yours.
What's the, what's the frustration?
I mean, actually, the even though we could explain the microscopic, you know, the dynamics of the molecules it's there. We cannot explain the phase transition from the liquid gas and the. Yeah, and he's talking about what kind of parameter is, you know, dominant to explain that that kind of phase transition. That that should be the important for.
I see.
Explaining the vivid consciousness and the broad conscious experience, in his opinion.
Really?
So so the 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 kind of the perspective that I found very interesting from Hayato. And he's a, you know, a, you know, kind of a master.
Um.
Mm.
Uh, Ojima was that the.
Ojima?
Ojima Izumi, Izumi Ojima, uh it's a ma- uh Saigo sensei. Is that that the usual, you know, the, uh, you know, this is a, let's say, your human level. And then as you go to the bottom, you know, like quantum or the molecule to atom to uh quantum.
Mm.
Then the kind of the mechanism becomes simpler and simpler and simpler. And then the randomness only emerges from the very bottom of the quantum.
Um, I see.
Right? And all the randomness is just inherited from molecule level.
Um.
At the protein level and then and the organism level and so on. And then just now, you know, Saigos and the 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 physicists.
Three physicists.
But in actuality, and I told you about this, but uh, you know. This, the the level of the determinism or the level of the kind of a ca- chaos, chaoticness. Actually fluctuates like across the scale.
Um.
Mmm, I see.
And then the, you know, when you focus on the planetary movement of the sun or, you know, Earth.
Mm.
Mm.
That's a level that, you know, this determinism is extremely, you know, strong.
Alright.
But once you start to go into the three-body problem or fourth problem, then this starts to become very, very chaotic.
In in terms of the expectation, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, you know, as you go to the even farther way, like a cosmic, you know, galaxy level interaction. It starts to become also really super chaotic.
We cannot predict.
Yeah, or understand, we can't really understand what's going on.
Right, but it should be deterministic.
Probably, but I don't understand, I I he would say it's not deterministic.
Um.
And the this, you know, the going down, it's not probably linearly going down this kind of a determinism. Or the chaotism or like this, it's more like this.
Um.
And it's a st- level of the scale that determines the level of the level of determinism and so on.
Um.
By adopting this, you know, plasma without A, no B kind of thing.
Mm.
At this particular level. And then we, if you start to think about the across level kind of, you know, determinism or causality. Then it's, even it starts to become unclear, really.
Um.
So the the upshot is that the, al- also, you know, the other study, uh other biologists also uh quantify. The level of determinism or chaos or no- noise as you go down.
Um.
It's not clear.
No.
But as you go down, that whether noise actually decreases.
Right.
It's almost like, oh, really fluctuate.
Um.
Uh-huh.
Against, you know, very, very, you know, standard physicist notion that if you go down. Then you can understand completely or you become like completely noisy.
No, 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 that's quite different.
Okay.
Quite wrong, because what about thermodynamics? If you go up.
One case again, you know, this thing of one case. That's very successful in terms of favorizing.
Mm-mm.
But plasma.
Plasma.
Or, you know, the the ultra, you know, that that's super conductivity.
Ah.
Or quantum tunneling level, then you know, every time you go across a scale.
Mm.
Sometimes it becomes more deterministic.
Mm.
Sometimes it's more become uh more chaotic.
Um.
Mm.
And so, it's not super clear.
No.
Sorry, I cannot follow you.
I also don't. I also don't understand.
It's okay both way, but uh if we are, yeah, like ego, if we are interested in uh broad Korea. Or that layer of us, then uh why don't we start with that layer instead of the starting with the bottom layer or the.
Tsuchiya suggested there must be a gap between Apollonia and. Lewalia is something like that?
Yeah.
Why not su- studying on Apollonia?
Get ramen?
Ramen, ramen.
I mean, I can also go with eleven forty five, forty five, you know. Daijoubu. Ikeza-san daijoubu?
Ah, buku daijoubu, hi.
Watashi keko ano. Daremo kizukazeni yobaraite ite. Daremo kizukazeni.
Shiran ga. Shibuya-iki made sa, koko-ara areta nan to?
十五分ぐらい.
Haya-ruki de, shuugou gurai. E, chotto S S S-san kiri.
S-san, kiri.
Kagaita koto mo nakkata?
Kagaita koto nai. Ma, ora betzuni Shibuya-iki made aruku no zenzen mottaku munka nai.
Watashi kichijoujin ni sundere nde, betzuni.
Jaj, kichijoujin.
Ichi gurai made. E, doko ni sundere ndesu ka imo?
Yokohama.
Toi desune, keko.
Toi nde, Yokohama no minami no fouda, Shibuya-ita no.
Shibuya ka?
Souda.
Shibuya-atte kita ja nai desu ka?
Minami no Shibuya.
Ah, souyou no ga aru desu ka?
Aru, aru.
Minami no ginza mitaina.
Minami ginza. Ginza kita na no?
E? Ya ya ya, ginza-te soko-rajun niyori no desu ka?
Ah, ginza.
Nojiri ginza toka.
Ginza. Ore, sa, wo noinde iino? Noinde iin jan, dame.
Dame, kaite no chou dame de wo, dame ni kime.
Imo shochu, imo shochu.
Ore, sou kite nai nde yo, sou.
It is very good, imo shochu.
Jaj, zei.
Tai-shou, sumasean. Ano, imo shochu.
Kore oishii yo, yusubi yori, kore soukou oishii desu ne.
Try this one.
Imo shochu.
Mina.
Omekashimasu.
Everyone has their.
Ah, konon imo shochu o, ah oku no karimi omekashimasu.
Why not trying this one?
Rock.
Hi.
Arele. Ah, ami, azumi. Shite nai.
I mean, the. He needs to try first.
Hontou ha, konomiya ne.
Konomi no emo te aru.
Imo jankute. Eto ne, koto.
Eto shikari me, kare me toka.
Shikari me, shikari me.
Hi.
No koto.
Shikari, nan desu ka?
Dense, dense black sugar.
Homo zeppe korya no.
Dense.
Naka study da ne, shikari me sa, koto te nani ka wahanai.
Very dense, very.
Debume Asamu-san says that she has a shape in the sake.
Ah, yeah, 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 I understand.
Shape.
What do you mean?
Says that, you know, some kind of sake has a square.
Shapes in.
And also cube, sometimes.
Taste shapes.
Well, but so, people say for, to describe uh alcohol, like drinks, they they talk about smoothness.
Yeah.
That makes a lot of sense, that makes a lot of sense, yeah, yeah.
Like around.
Sharp and smooth, then that's a concept.
But this is very reasonable, because you're very. Uh, this is relevant to the receptor on your tongue.
Well, is this smooth or sharp?
Sharp.
Very sharp, so sharp.
Very extrinsic.
This is cutting like, sharp.
Very extrinsic red.
Extrinsic red.
Yeah. Yes.
Very red.
Very red.
Red Kolya.
Red Kolya.
So now, now.
Very narrow.
Very narrow Kordis.
Now, San, I have a question. Do you remember the, if there was a moment where you thought for the very first time about this idea of Kolya structure?
Right.
Like like, this is a thing, this is a project, this is a, you know, it, an a label for a thing.
Right, so I actually talked about that.
Right, like, la- radio during.
Yeah, in Japanese radio version.
Hmm.
We 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 failed with this, you know, kind of a thing for five times.
Uh, what was the thing before?
The first one was probably like, you know, study of the consciousness or something.
Mm-hmm.
And then that's super boring, right? Got out and then.
Boring.
Yeah, boring, right, study of consciousness has a title.
Nobody cares.
Nobody cares.
A lot of good researchers gathering.
Right, and then the second version was like generating. The field of consciousness study or something, that was led by Ryota.
Um.
And then he went on to the interview. And that was not so bad, and then after that, Shimojo, Shin Shimojo did that, but that was, you know, killed by the first generation. And then the, then me led the first time, it was a understanding consciousness through the category theory.
Okay.
Ah, yeah.
Now was, oh, okay, you said.
Yeah, I see, like this is the area and then.
Ma, okay.
Then, the criticism was that it's empty. You say category theory of the consciousness, but what what does it mean, right? So they invited me, but it didn't go, okay?
Okay.
And then all the criticism was about category theory, so I kind of, you know, became very weak about category theory. And so I general, the decided to change the title into. Uh geometric, geometric interpretation of the consciousness or something. That was super boring.
Um, um.
Right, and nobody cared, and then it was killed by the first intern. But I actually collected a super strong, you know, team in Japan.
Um.
So I was super confident and then I submitted and then I asked them to prepare for secondary gen- document. But then I got this rejection at the first level, that was so devastated.
And that's where you were almost like, I'm not gonna commit anymore. You were giving up.
Right, I I gave up completely.
Toss the towel.
But then, uh Ma- Masahumi said that now, that's that's good, that that's fine, I understand it. But we we get to the point where we extracted this inter- 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 interesting idea of the Yone Dilemma.
Mm.
Hmm.
We should continue at least one more time in a smaller scale.
So the Yone Dilemma was the thing that was different from before that now you were like?
Two years ago, we proposed a ken- uh the category theoretical understanding of uh, you know, consciousness. And we extracted that what it is about the category theoretical, you know, understanding of consciousness, which is the Yone Dilemma.
Mm.
But we didn't kind of, you know, put it in the front in the second time.
Mm.
But Masahumi thought that that idea was really brilliant.
Mm.
So we should actually, you know, in the third time, put this into the front.
Mm.
About, you know, you, we can't like, you know, put the title of the Yone Dilemma Koya structure or something like that, right? And then around that time, I started kind of read broadly.
Mm.
In terms of many different kind of literature, probably, I, if I remember. And then there I hit onto this, you know, structuralism.
Hmm.
Mmm.
And then structuralism and the Kolya is a, in a sense, it's opposite, right? But it kind of makes sense through category theory.
Hmm.
Mmm.
So.
Very revolutionary to think about Kolya in structure.
Ah.
Yeah, in a structure.
Because usually they are op- in philosophy, they're opposite.
In a philosophy.
Yeah, I T is one of the few thing, places where you find.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, and then category theory.
Then, you know, that's like, you know. Yone Dilemma is possible.
Mm.
And also category theory or thinking about Kolya in the structural terms. Right, that that's the.
I see.
Otokasan wo kare ruu zkan wo kaito mora.
Hai, arigatou.
Datte toshou ano, lukki kara hachi toka.
So actually, the initially, the this.
Ah, arigatou.
From the six P M to the eight, eight P M.
Oh.
Right, but now.
It's very late.
Because, yeah, I was kind of very sorry about, yeah, occupying this ra- nice restaurant, but, yeah. He's very kind.
Ah.
Yeah, we need to drink more. We.
No, 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 you don't have to care about, we already ate a lot.
We're welcome.
O- o- overstaying, basically.
No, 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 you don't have to care about it, he is just kind, very nice person.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is, how do you feel about being live on YouTube? Is it uncomfortable?
Uh, I I. Forgot about uh live at.
That's great.
Mm-mm, more spontaneous.
To appear to everyone.
More spontaneous, yeah, I, that's good.
What, what about you?
So, I think.
You don't like it?
No, 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 it's okay, but in in real life.
Mm.
I already had, uh, I was a, an insecure person. And so I had to deal with um the idea that. I tend to think that, you know, there's a lot of masking going on, right? So you have, you 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 think you have to behave in a specific way when you are in a certain context, right? So this, all this masking.
Mm.
Is is always happening. But interestingly, um, something that happens is that actually when you, when you uh stop. Sort of like masking and you and you show.
Masking in terms of uh masking experiment or no?
About broadcasting.
No, 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 masking in the sense of you behave in a way that is different from what you feel authentically you would behave, like, for instance. Who think that if they behave spontaneously, they will be considered awkward.
Mm.
Like, for instance, autistic people talk about masking, because they they are like, they try to fit with society, right? And all sorts of like neurodivergent people, th- think like that there is this concept of masking. But interestingly, the the, the concept of masking is interesting because you sort of like have this pressure of, about behaving in a specific way. That is non-spontaneous and it's very hard for you and it's also, it doesn't really transmit enthusiasm and spontaneity. And people, I I think most of the time they may not be able to relate and connect level.
Mm.
Maybe also non-verbal, just like, how can I say, like, uh, you know, uh, c- compassion, synergistic level. So, so sometimes, I, so I like the idea of the.
うん
so so sometimes I so I like the idea of the the ramen
yeah
science or or the ramen talks because
うんうん
um when you give a talk at a conference you are like your your presentation is polished you think about your appearance your attire like you 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 give an image of yourself that is very different from your daily image right
うんうんうんうんうんうん
hmm
but instead the 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 spontaneity like for instance we had a we had a solid well like twenty minutes we were talking about death yeah we were talking about existential questions that is something that
うんあ
the 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 people think about maybe when they wake up at night and they will eventually they will have to die right and that's an existential
うんうんうん
moment right and it's it's frightening
うん
maybe we should actually cut that part as a independent part and then make it like a discussion of that
yeah yeah yeah
うん
it's interesting
yeah
yeah but but I mean s- contemporary science tended to uh it's schizophrenic it tended to separate the human side of a person from the researcher
yeah
うん
right right
yeah yeah I see
right
like you the researcher the 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 public figure needs to be this this perfect you know kind of thing projecting I don't know stereotypes and stuff like that
うんうんうん
so so I'm I'm going on this rant because we were asking about you know the the comfort in in having a a youtube live session but I mean I value
うんうん
spontaneity and authenticity because I think that's
うん
that's showing the complexity and if we are trying to study consciousness we are trying to includes all these quirks and all this
うん
different yeah
yeah I I I seriously think that you know hype on of the discussion session at the last day
different things
of that the kolia meeting was you know you two's you know uh comment actually
うん
what 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 comments which comments
嗯 you know bo- both of you too actually mateo and also you know uh
I don't remember
but which comments I don't remember
eiko so eiko actually I think you said about ramen youtube
yeah
man
right and then the big you you basically liked this thing right and then mateo also before or after
yeah I really like うん
said that the um there's a
podcast
dehumanization of the science days ago
あ yeah okay okay
yeah
and I I think these two comments basically were the high points of the discussion
あ okay I see
and that that made me decided to actually come to you know today's ah also this is actually you know al- almost like a
oh today's great restaurant
great restaurant and we probably should have uh use too much
あ running out of the battery
battery あすみませんあのバッテリーを
えっとこれ there's a battery here
なん何が需要ですか
タイプはね多分普通のこのこの穴これなんですけど多分こちら
no no then this one here
あコンセント
this one here
コンセントなんですけど
あここ
あダメです絶対ダメです
絶対ダメだ
あのそっちの冷蔵庫なんで
そうだよそうだよ
あ okay
ありがとう
this is great
yeah
あとなんかもらうあのラーメン
ラーメンラーメンラーメンラーメン
ら-あのラーメン
yes
ラーメンラーメン
ラーメンのメニューがございますラーメンのメニューがあればいただきますあ入口のところ入口のところ
yeah so I I it maybe it maybe revolutionary that this are the last one
hmm
what I because I've never heard that
あもうもう
あ持ってきました大丈夫ですか
about a discussion about this you know making it like a
どれがいいですか
全部
そうそうそうそうそうそうそうそう
this is a chicken
this is no no I like sprain this is a normal Chinese soba Chinese noodle
okay
あ you can have one one or half
um
or one third
one
can you can you tell me the options
yeah this is normal Chinese ramen this is something
wait wait so
シナ
シナ
シナもin the china
yeah yeah
シナ
china
すう
そば
そばあシナそばシナそばはいはいはい
and this is
酒粕って書いてある
yeah
smelling noodle
あまじかわかりました
yeah but this is actually no
まぜ
まぜ
スパンとムードイズセパレ
yeah soup and noodle are separate yeah
アルコールが含まれる
ワンタン
this is one time
you're you're understand right very good
one time this isチャーシュー
あチャ
that's a pork pork meat
チャーシュー this is most expensive
this as well
chicken soba most expensive
chicken とりそ
とりそばとり
とりそばとりそば
yeah
waitとりそば um
chicken
chicken story
chicken chicken
とり
とり and this isほじゅんシナそばほじゅんis 酒粕 soup is something made from sake
like 酒プラスチャナサ yeah chinaシナそば
from sake
very
is there meat in that
I don't know
we find like
no no I don't
oh that it doesn't
ほじゅんシナそばって肉入りですか
no 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 I don't think so
あと
あ we
酒粕を乗ります結構
okay
結構食べてる状態です
お腹空いてるか
are you hungry or full
いやえっともうあのあれなのかと思ったんであの
まだ飲むのかってことですか
いやあの
結構
食べれるなら全然オッケーですけどサイズダウン分も結構多いので
はい
ぐもあのそのご自分を
なるほど
合わせて行ってもらえればサイズダウンは可能です
so i- if you order like as usual it will come as a dinner size
no a full full ramen
あの
full full ramen
で麺の量自体目から半分とか三分のちとか
if you are ready to become very
sorry dead
yeah fat
completely dead
dead completely dead that you can
okay and what's the other option
or one half or one third or two thirds or
oh no ah you can go a half
here half totally you know he he would adjust it as you wish
you can do a half okay okay yeah I would like a half
huh
I will take this
but something happened what what
just recover
okay
I will take thisまぜそば half ofまぜそば
which one is that sorry
まぜそば
and that's um what what is it
uh this is ramen and soup is split it
ah
split
ahまぜまぜまぜ like you dip dip dipping kind of dipping noodle no you dip or
まぜまぜyeah yeah yeah but actually he alreadyまぜまぜmix it but just put a bit of soup and
ah okay
oh really
but I really like the soup
okay
and also really like the noodle
okay
so theまぜそばis
まぜそばis very
yeah very nice
something that you recommend
but yeah I think so but
hmm
wellほじゅんシナそばis also very nice
hmm
with uh 酒粕 soup is made from
酒
酒 very interesting
hmm
with butter
butter
butter very enough dense
oh hmm
you just close your
chuck
chuck
yes
window for the society
window for the society
I always open I I'm very open
okay you don't have to talk about it
I I tend to be always open
I don't care who cares about it
PG 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 you not what you
PG but I you don't understand what it means
so what what other so what are you what againシナそば シナそば
シナそばnormal Chinese soba
シナそば
シナ china soba
シナそば what about now san
ソーシャル
ソーシャル
ソーシャルオープン
ソーシャルウィンドウ
ソーシャルオープン
the nihon one
うん
no which one what
なんだろうあの
what what sorry
what's now said what do you say
I I I new ones
俺でもどうしようかな ソーシャルあシナそばほじゅんシナそばis good
you can take rice also チャーシューご飯
いや俺はなんかそばがいいけど
butチャーシューご飯is made from the soup of ramen very nice soup
ah
ら that's like a what the francesco
うん yeah 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 actually
hmm nice
うん
でもなんかレコメンはまぜそばなんでしょ
ついねこれを選んじゃうんだけど他にも美味しいああなるほどなるほど
ベースなので
なるほどなるほど
まあできればスーパー飲んで
今日もし死ぬとしたらどれ取った方がいいですかシナそばがこれは最後
えそうなんですかでも前さ
じゃ俺シナそばだ
えでも前S型さんなんか前
あとお客さんだとしたらわかりますけど
なるほど
いや俺が今日死ぬとしたらシナそばです
あした死の人だったら
まああのシナそば一択する
じゃ俺シナそばだ
えなんかシナそばにしない
so if I die today then he would recommend aシナそば
いやそれそれ別に僕の話なんで
いや無難はいいす
but I really like this
あの今日死ぬか死なないかのギャンブルをしてるとしたら
ああとだから
死なないから
いや俺死ぬかもしれないもういっぱい乗っかってるのを選ぶと
じゃチャーシュー麺ワンダーメンじゃないですかチャ
わかんない[1244.41] わかんない
ホイシナソバにしたエクスペリエンスとしては
もう乗れば乗りますね二種類三種類もう今日死ぬとしたらっていう感じですね。
死なないから大丈夫だよ。
俺は死ぬと思って生きてんだよ。
But I often dreaming
いや、もう今日死ぬとしたら
死なないから大丈夫だよ。
なんで死ぬの？
わかってない 来る？ え、本当？
そうですよね。じゃあシナソバにします。
初めて来た人にスープを飲んでもらいたいってのが
そうだ、大将の
メンシュロンとしてやっぱりあるわけ
大将のフリービールは
分かったよ。
シナソバ
分かったよ。私は混ぜそばにしますよ。
He'll comment, he's all, okay.
Okay, you three are shina soba, half shina soba?
あ、俺フルシナソバ。
フルシナソバ。
Half, half.
Half, half and full。一杯。
あ、あーどうしよう。全部綺麗に食べましたね。
なんでこれあるんだよ。
え、しょ
置いた？
あ、結果これつけやつあるんだよ。
だから俺なんでここに置いた？
これ私の骨だよ。これ私の
There's what which made it he will remain, and he says that shina soba basically because it's a base out taste in this.
Did I tell you guys that I started to read, I actually finished to read, Die with zero?
Hmm? What?
Die with zero.
The name of the book.
The name of the book.
No, 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 no.
So you wanna die when you have nothing to live? Like in terms of money, or in terms of nothing to, nothing you wanted to do? And I, I wanted to actually ask you, like, if you actually, you know, believe that you continue to be like an otome, or not an adult, you will lose it.
Lose what?
Lose what you can do, or what you could have done five years ago, but not now, or forever.
As an adult?
Adult. You already have something, right? It is like five or six years, right?
Five.
Yeah, you can't do anything when she was already two or three years old, right? Anymore.
No, 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 no. I was growing up with her.
No, no, I'm, I'm totally telling, telling you that, you know, I, I actually missed the kind of moment when my son or daughter was like two years old. And you already also missed it.
What, what?
Like, what do you mean by missed?
Missed me, what?
Like, you know, there is a moment or kind of activity that you can do only when they were two years old.
Sorry, I don't understand.
It's the same thing, like, you know, when you're, when you are twenty years old, you can do certain things. But no, when you are forty years old, or not even when you are thirty years old.
Yeah.
Like
I'm forty.
Forty.
But at the same time, no, actually not forty, but I'm around forty, but at the same time, I'm around no, I don't think I'm around five, but I don't think I will die.
You will.
No, never.
I know, you cannot also
I will live with her forever.
as when you were in the twenty years old. Like, you cannot learn to study, uh, to start like snowboarding or skiing, right?
Sorry, sorry.
If you are, if you are not, right?
Why are you talking about snowboarding?
I mean, for me, for example, I, I never tried any, you know, serious, you know, snowboarding or wakeboarding or, you know, uh, ski, you know, I, I kind of didn't want it to do as well. But when I go to the some kind of a ski conference, and then I have an opportunity to do it, I can't enjoy it. I, I, I can spend some money to do it, but as I'm, you know, forty seven years old, you know, I can learn to some extent, but when I watch the Amari-san who is already like eighty-five or eighty-nine years old, who had already spent so much time on skiing in the young, he enjoys a lot. Skiing at that age, but because he did it in a young time, right? I can't do that ever when I became his age. I missed it already.
Hmm? Why are you talking about? I'm actually an instructor of skiing.
Oh, okay, but fine, that's to do something, you know, in the, you know, future.
Sorry.
What you haven't done before, you cannot do it, because you already missed that opportunity.
No, 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 I don't think so.
You did.
What kind of opportunity do you?
I don't know, but you know, you probably didn't, I, I
Is that the message from that, that book?
In general.
In general?
The opportunity for forty years old.
I mean, you know, everything, right? Like, you know, you, you, you chose to be a philosopher. And then you spend a lot of time on the philosophizing, on the reading and thing, and then right now you can do this, right? And then you are right now probably the, you know, one of the three experts in I A T from philosophy side. But you can't become like La Lisa, who is a computational side of the I A T expert, or neuroscience part of the expert, Melanie Bori. You are you.
Yeah.
Who defines right now, right?
I can't no understand.
And you are the
Okay, okay, okay.
sinesthetiary expert, but you are not the expert in the psychophysics.
No, no, no.
Or, you know, I A T.
So?
Even if you want to. And if you want to be, then you will lose, you, you have already lost the time.
I must be some, someone.
Yeah.
But wait, wait, so you're saying, you're basically implying that there is a window that is closed for some things.
Yeah.
But there is a window that is still open, like you don't know.
Totally, totally, totally open.
So what are the things that you see in calculus, like sports, I think it's very age-related, right?
Right.
Probably something like music or languages might also be age-related. It's very hard to pick up easily, you know, age-related.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
But some other things might not be.
Right.
Like, yeah, so, what are you saying exactly? Like, I'm, I'm trying to understand whether you're saying
Yeah, I, I'm kind of understanding what you're, yeah, because, well, I, I guess what you, he likes to, he likes to say is, he likes me as a forty years old.
Yes.
He respects me as a forty years old.
Yes.
Not sixteen years or something.
Yeah, so, so, so maybe what he, so one, and one so when you're saying you should accept that you are an adult right now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I understand. I completely understand.
It means that you shouldn't Right, right. But what does this mean that the window is closed for some new explorations, and you should commit to some things that you've done so far?
I think it's probably, window is never closed. It's just becoming narrow one, narrow one, narrow.
And more effort to actually do something, yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, I don't think so, but yeah.
Right. And because, I, I only see this, you know, a person
Yeah.
who tries to go to a graduate school as a Japanese person. But not in Japan.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And at the level, at the age of forty.
Um, yeah, yeah, yeah. I understand.
So, you know, she wants to go there, and then she says that she wants to learn English, and to master English, but at the same time she also complains, you know, if she, you know, goes, comes to my love meeting. It's depressing. Like every time, anything for one and a half hour, every time, feeling no progress. But here in the twenties, right? Then every time she comes, she feels probably like, every time it's improving, right?
I completely understand you.
So, it's more effortful.
Yeah, I completely understand. So I have kind of two standards.
Double standards?
Double standard.
That's very bad.
No, 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 no.
Good type of double standard.
Not double, but infinite number of standards. You can have infinite standard, because
That doesn't mean standard then.
No, 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 no.
That's a flexible criteria.
So you don't, so you don't have to have any standards, because, you know, everything must be empty as a body has them.
Okay, okay.
And Takashi said
Uh-huh.
Uh.
You should also start to think about, you know, doubt, you know, Takashi.
No, 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 listen to me. Huh?
He may be completely wrong as well.
Maybe, but I, I really like Takashi, but listen to his words. He said
It's not what he says.
What?
Other people, that's what he said.
No, no, please, please, don't interrupt me.
All right.
So that's the very famous proverb in Japan. 少年 is a boy, it's easy to get old, and then
He can't, you know, complete the study.
Study, not study. How do I say in gakumen in more broader sense? Not study, but academia. He cannot complete academia.
Wait, wait, what does he mean? A boy?
A boy is easily
Boy gets older very quickly.
Yeah.
Before he completes or, you know, achieves something in academics.
No, not achieve something in academia, not something, complete academia. But Takashi suggested, if you keep a spirit, spirit of boy
Hmm.
then you can achieve academia.
And more curiosity and
Curiosity.
Ah, that's totally fine. I mean, I'm completely, you know, agreeing with that.
So that's why I have, I, I like to keep my, keep myself to be a otome.
But that's different.
No, 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 completely.
That's different, you know, what, what I'm saying, yeah, is, uh
He's just boring.
Yeah, I, I, I'm very annoying. I'm very annoying, because I'm very, very taking the reality seriously. And that's very hard to
What reality, what is reality?
Reality is that, you know, not only intrinsic perspective, but extrinsic kind of, you know, reality, which is that physical degradation of many things.
For sure.
Yeah.
Decay.
Decay.
Right.
That's a fact.
Yeah.
And if you don't accept that, and then if you just live in idealism, just, it's just, you know, unhealthy.
Right. Yeah, actually, we cannot generate a new kids eternally, it's a biological rule.
I mean, if we, if you can devise some kind of method, you know, I, I, I'll, I'll be ready to change. And so I'm also fighting against, you know, kind of the becoming old. I, you know, I, I'm trying to be healthy, like sleeping and eating and also
No, no, no. You don't understand anything.
I do, probably, okay?
I'm, I, I don't.
Okay.
I don't maybe, but I'm trying to understand Shiozaku Arakawa always.
Okay.
So I think I never understand him, but I'm trying to.
Okay.
I think that's really, I never die. The world is very, very important to me and very important to a lot of people. But I'm always trying to think about it, trying to uh, understand it, but it's very difficult.
Right.
すいません、シナソバ一人前普通の方
はい
ちょっと前
はい、大丈夫です。
どこしまっちゃった
はい今
これ私の箸だよね。あ、美味しいそう。
ハイライトなの？
これサムニンにしたらどうですか？
いや、俺とマジ議論がいいじゃないか。
そんなことないよ。
いただきます。
ラーメンの議論なんてしてないじゃん。
いや、別に
これ私の箸で
いいんだけどね。
どっちが使ったんだ？
どっちでも、最終的には
どちらも良くないよ。私
いや、俺はでも
じゃあ私の勝ちね。じゃあ私の勝ちね。
別にいいよ。いいよ、それは、それはどっちでもいい。いや、そんなことない。いや、強い気持ちだとそれはそれでいい。
I want to understand the message by the book, message from the book, exactly, so.
From what?
In my understanding, that was about the financial strategy.
No, no, no.
No, no?
So, that's one thing.
Okay.
Financial.
Die with zero starts with maximizing the happiness in your life.
Hmm. Right, right.
And that, he believes that the, the memory of a good thing actually increases as a compound. And also, there is some kind of happiness that you can enjoy at the particular time in the moment. So for example, uh, when I think about it, I have an, um, kind of dream of going to the Sydney to cross the bridge, uh, which is very, very high in the, you know, high, um, in the, uh, up in the air, and it must be very, very scary, but I cannot do that probably if I become like sixty, right? So I need to do that right now, or you know, within ten years or something like that. And if I miss that, I cannot do it. And also, you know, I already missed the kind of the opportunity to play, you know, and also enjoy soccer playing team with other people. I mean, I was enjoying until like thirty-five or something like that, but when I had some kind of big injury, I started, you know, weigh about, you know, excitement and the benefit versus, you know, danger and things like that, and then I decided it's not worth doing. So this is the kind of thing that I'm talking about.
Yeah, 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 I understand.
And you know, if you continue to believe that you are continuing to be, you know, really young all the time, you're just, you know, crazy, and then you just lose everything.
No, I don't think so.
You lose the moment of, you know, when you are, you have to do things at this moment, you just delay. Like, you know, you think that you can play with your daughter anytime, it's not true.
No, oh, I understand.
You can play with it two years old with right now only.
I, of, of, of course, I understand. Of course, I understand.
That's, that's, that's a reality.
No, 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 no.
You get older, that's a reality.
No, 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 no.
That, no, no, that's the thing, that's the first thing, that you, you understand, and then
No, I understand. Stop it, stop it.
you optimize your, your happiness.
I see, so that you think that we should, you should pay money for the experience at the moment, you mean?
No, no, no. I understand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, right, that, that's why
Of course, of course, I understand. I, 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 I'm always paying attention to the very instance, every instance of my time of daughter, of course, why not? I'm always taking, but, you know? Of course, but I think well
You are dying every moment.
No, no, no. You don't have to think about it. Stop that.
So you have to, you know, appreciate the moment.
No, 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 no.
That, that's the, no, no, the moment, the way, that's the sort of the message of the
No, 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 no.
Okay, I see, I know.
I appreciate every moment with my daughter, so for me, everything, every information, infinite number of information is contained in the every moment, so it's infinite. It goes infinite every time. I will concentrate every moment of with my daughter, so infinite beyond the counting of time or something, you know?
But, Eiko, so if you, Eiko, if you won't die, and if you are eternally the girl, then why you need to pay attention to that moment at that time? So you are eternally, you won't, you won't die?
No, 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 you don't have to think about
It's equally, equally important.
Right.
No, I need Takashi's help. Takashi agrees with me. I, I believe so.
That doesn't matter.
Takashi knows everything, but he supports me.
No, never. So, so what about I mean, I think there is a concept like, you know, Peter Pan syndrome, like clinging?
No, that's not different from Peter Pan syndrome.
Exactly. But he's accusing you
Yeah, 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 yeah.
of something like Peter Pan.
Yeah, yeah, of course. Yeah, I understand. That you were right.
clinging, like to some earlier way of living that is different, and it's not like keeping up with
That's not much of Peter Pan syndrome.
accepting that some things you can't do anymore, but realizing that there are some things that you can do now and not later. And probably, which is, I think, underappreciated, now and not earlier. Like, I realize that in my thirties, like, late thirties, there are some things that I can do now that I couldn't do earlier, so it's not just like, I'm, 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 you know, but also not later.
I totally understand their reality. I totally understand it, too.
I totally understand. So, the way, the way, the way, the, what, what, what Mateo is saying is exactly the case for my, me and also my kid, actually. When I brought my son to Fiji for several years ago, right now, he actually doesn't remember anything. You know, so, in a sense, in a sense, you know, it is a worth kind of, you know, uh, trip to do for me and my wife and my, you know, sister, uh, my, my daughter, who remember the things. But this, my, my daughter, son, doesn't remember anything. It was too early for him, right? But now is the time, he can probably appreciate the trip to go to somewhere else. But at the same time, he's now in the time when he values that playing a game all the time. But I don't know whether he will appreciate this, you know, time of the trip with his teenager, you know, to broaden his perspective or not, but I, I would just give some kind of, you know, opportunity, right? It may broaden his perspective or not, I don't know. But what, what I know for sure is that when he was like eighty years old or sixty years old, going to the trip to the Fiji, it was a fun memory for us, because he actually played with the old people, with the gate ball and so on, well, without us knowing and so on. It was surprising, and it was always fun memory, but he himself doesn't have it. So it is definitely not the best memory or time for him to do the Fiji trip, right? So that's basically same, as you know, that, there is a time, kind of time window that can maximize the happiness of some kind of event.
I see.
It's not like the earlier the better, no.
No.
But in general, I think that area the better, in many cases, because of the benefit of the compound interest.
But that, that's different from the, you know, the point, whether the experience of the Fiji is beneficial for him or not. Actually, that even though he is a conscious, actually, the that abs- absence of the memory of the Fiji might be the much more beneficial when he grew, grew up, than that he experienced the Fiji at the first time, than that he gained a much more experience there, right?
Maybe, maybe.
That happens, so we cannot judge whether which is the better one or not.
Maybe, yeah. But generally, I feel like probably twenty to thirty, it's best to experience various things.
No, I never think about general something, general experience or something. I never.
That's
Then you will become a general person.
Yeah, general person.
I will be a special person.
The recommendation is for general.
No recommendation, no need for recommendation. I will be a special person, not general. You must be a general person.
That's fine, then, you, you don't need to listen to us.
No, never, never, never.
Right, right, right. You can make your own theory, explaining your own consciousness. That's totally fine, but not supported by the science.
Why?
Because it's a place of your assumption.
Why are you so mean to me?
It should be the generated, I mean, the general, you know, the theory should be, you know, the explaining the general phenomena, you know, the
Why are you so mean to me?
Why, why do you think?
Are you mean?
Yeah, right, you are mean to everyone, for me, yeah.
No, but I mean, wait, are you mean to me?
No, 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 but wait, it doesn't mean being
This is not the matter of science, but this is the matter of life, so you don't have to talk about me. Or you don't have to persuade me. This is my, my view of my life. This is not different from science.
Yeah, that's fine, that's totally fine.
You don't have to prove by science. Why are you so mean to me?
But I, I'd like to talk about the general science to explain about the
No, no general science.
Yeah, you don't care about that, that's totally fine.
No.
That's fine, totally fine. That's totally fine.
Why are you talking about it?
I mean, if you care about science, then this is the thing.
No, no science.
And if you don't, you want to, then you don't need to come to this in a discussion, right?
What?
Because we are talking about science of the general, you know, on average benefit.
No, 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 no.
Right.
But if you are not interested in that topic, then you don't need to join, right?
No interest.
Like, like, you know, we are talking about economy, and you are not interested in economy, and you don't need to join, right?
No. Okay, okay.
The general, on average, kind of, you know, the benefit of that.
But you, you are talking to me, right?
No, 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 no. I'm, I'm just talking about it right now, about that book for the Die with Zero.
No, 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 no.
Right. Wait, so, let's say, you know, population, you, you get a Gaussian distribution, like, of people,
Mm-hmm.
majority of people, like average, you know, it's like middle of the Gaussian, lots of people share some experience. And it seems like it's important for you to think that your life is special, right? It's not general, like you said that.
Mm. Mm. Mm.
So how does it feel, this idea that your life must be special compared to just
I think everyone's life must be special.
Right, everyone's life must be special. Yeah, 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 yeah.
No original, no general.
I have no objection at all about this. And also, I even, you know, have the
So I don't like to talk about general life or something.
I, wait, 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 wait. I have already even, um, suspicion about, you know, general life cannot be expected or explained from Gaussian.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Many things are actually super nonlinear, super, you know, special. And in that sense, each of the experience is in a particular kind, right? And everybody is actually always three standard deviation away from the normal in something.
Exactly. So, so our lives, if you think about that, our lives are very unconventional.
Mm.
Like, you know, if you think about the average person living on planet Earth throughout history, our lives are very, very strange, very, very special, right? But I think about this a lot, because there's a connection between the idea of how common or special your life is, and the implication about the meaning of your life. Here we are talking about, is it a life that is average or general?
Yeah.
Less meaningful than a life that is special?
Mm.
Yeah.
What do you think? Like, do you give more value to a life that is very special than to a life that is very average, very common, very general?
Sorry, could you say it again?
Yes, 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 yes. So, so it seems like you're, 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 you're trying to understand your life
Mm-hmm.
in terms of, you know, something that deviates from an average, like
No, no, no. I don't think there must be some average of life.
Mm-hmm.
No average.
There's no average.
Everyone must be special.
I see, in its own way.
Mm.
Ah, I see, I see, I see, I see.
So I don't find any good points to think about average age or average something. Of course, physically or some mentally, there must be some, something, but why do you think it is important? Or I don't care about it.
No, importance or not, it doesn't matter.
Mm.
It is more to do with the Buddhism history, Buddhism thinking about useful or not.
Useful.
Useful or not.
For, for society, for the rest of
For you yourself.
For yourself?
For yourself. It's completely self-centered. Right? Like, you know, thinking about, you know, Daniel Kahneman and Tversky's, you know, kind of the bias and also, uh, variance kind of theory of the mental, you know, property, right? You, you care, you don't care anything about, you know, people's, you know, general property. Okay, that's fine, you know, you can live like that, right? And then, you know, you you don't listen to any kind of the conversation, like the general people's, you know, tendency. Then, general tendency people knows that, you know, there is a kind of a, you know, theory about, let's say, hollow effect. Where, you know, good-looking people look like, you know, convincing in general. And we be very careful about, you know, good-looking people, in assessing, the reviewing this, you know, people in the interview. Or like, you know, availability, you know, heuristic, like when we think about something very complicated. We tend to think about something that is, you know, really available, like, you know, uh advertised by the mass communication and things like that. So let's say, right now, you know, people are talking about all about Trump and things like that. So we need to be careful about this mass communication kind of, you know, bias, right? Because on in general, in general, humans are biased towards this kind of availability heuristic or. Hollow effect.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Wait, wait, then, for the people who know about this kind of bias. They can behave probably slightly better when achieving their own kind of goal, if they have.
But I mean what?
You completely ignore this kind of thing.
I don't completely ignore it, because I actually get a tenure drug.
I I I understand, I understand. It's a hypo hypothesis. If you completely ignore ignore this general trend of the.
Ignore.
But hypothetical, hypothetical, if you completely ignore the ignore this general trend, then you miss a lot.
Of course, yes.
Yes, so you you so you want to probably incorporate some of the general trends.
Of course, yes.
Average, but you also at the same time, five minutes ago, you don't want to admit average.
Well, there must be double standard that what I said. As a scientist or some to talking about, but yeah. When when I'm talking about something about scientific, I must obey there some some law like. Well, of course, there must be some trend, like from yeah, zero years old. Ten years old, something like that, and and I studying child development, I of course caring about it. Yeah, at the five years old, something, the cha- children. Can do something and at the se- se- ten years old, children can do something. Of course, why, why don't you, why do you think I don't care about it? Of course, I care about it. But that's the not matter. You are you are talking, I I was talking about my life, my view of my life. But you are talking to me about my view of my life.
No, no, no. I I respect, I respect that your attitude of completely ignoring average, that's fine.
I I didn't talk about it.
That's a hypothetical, you know, hypothetical, you know, that, you know, some kind of person, you're not you, like Mateo. Who completely ignores about the average view of the life. I'm totally fine with it. But I think from the usefulness point of view. I think that taking the, you know, knowledge about the average view, average person. Or average kind of, you know, Japanese person, average, you know, US person, will be very useful for me to behave this and that way. And I know that, you know, on average, I'm gonna die around eighty-five years old. And that's useful for me to plan for the future. But if you completely ignore that and I'm gonna not die, and that may be fine with you. But I will, I think personally. I will be very, very, very unsatisfied.
Okay.
If I live like that, I don't wanna live like that. I I completely, you know, reject your idea. But that's my view. But you're fine, you're totally fine with, you know, completely, you know, you know, assuming that you live forever. I don't, I I respect that. That's it.
Then why are you talking?
I'm talking about my view.
Okay.
My view is that I'm gonna die by basically.
Around five eighty, okay.
But I don't want to do that, so I doing that, you know, as much as possible in terms of health and sleep and exercise.
I may die.
Because of that general kind of, you know, psychological and health kind of scient- scientific knowledge. But, you know, it it's totally, you know, uh completely, you know, the the interaction between scientific knowledge and the personal life, right? You know, I I also respect some kind of person like Francesco's smokes, right? He probably knows that the smoke is not good for health on average, but he does that, he choose it.
So I I do not. Draw the line, right? Probably all the. Nihonju and choju that we drank tonight, it's not good for us, but we did that.
Yeah, I I know that this is not good for my health.
So if at that time, we believe something about eternity.
No.
Eternity of my, our life.
What do you mean?
Well, this alcohol is not effective to my, our life directly. Of course, yes.
No, 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 I I feel like it's gonna kill me, but I know that and I I do that.
Probably kill you, probably.
Hours or something, I don't know.
But not directly kill you.
No, not directly, not directly, no. And probably, you know, benefit of doing this, to have this kind of conversation is out uh better. Than not having this and a boring conversation. And that's why I choose to do this. That's fine. I mean, that that, I mean, I'm I'm doing it intentionally. And I hope that I won't be regretting tomorrow. Probably I will not.
But no, I don't think so. Yeah, I mean, you, I think, yeah, you learn also. A window of tolerance of doing something that is outside of your, you know, comfort zone. You probably don't get cheat face like you were in your twenties. And then you regretted it. Now you're like, I know that I'm risking it, I'm going a little bit loud, overboard, but then not, not too bad.
Right.
But so, I mean, so, I like the premise, you know, in something like absurdism and and sort of like the idea that. You know, there is no answer. There is no clear answer. And the freedom is to choose between the options on how to face this absurdity, right? So one way, I don't know, I mean, you probably, each of you, I suppose, fell in love at a certain point and did something very silly. And thought they were the first person in history to fall in love and and you know, in that, in that moment, you are like. I'm I'm, this is new. Nobody has ever figured this thing out, and so I am a pioneer. And and being alive feels a little bit like that, you have this thing about death, and nobody has figured out this thing about love and. And you're kind of a pioneer, you are, you're the first person ever, because because you are intrinsically, right? You are, you don't have anybody else's experience. So then then you have two choices. One is to be kind of like bold and say, maybe the average is. Because, I don't know, maybe all all people were wrong, like, you know? Or you can set, trust it and say, well, if everybody agreed that that this is sort of like what happens, then I should immediately stick to that. I don't think there is necessarily a a a bad way to go or a good way to go. It's like on you, like, to be like, I'm gonna be bold. I'm not gonna listen to other people, I'm going to explore my own trajectory. And maybe this is to not accept um easily the idea that you will have to die. Or to not accept that, you know, in love, when there is a person that things don't work very well, maybe just like move on, no contact. Plenty of fish in the sea, that's that's not, you know, you you don't accept that. It's not a good, a good way to approach love, right? I mean, I'm saying something, something very, very tangible, very practical, because it feels like you're the first person in the history to face. These type of things when they happen to you, right? Um, and and you have the choice in front of you. I I don't know, and the beauty of life is a little bit like that, there is no recipe. And you are exploring. It's like a make your own adventure.
Yeah, so by by default, really, you know, really.
Default.
No, by by default, you know, you, everybody is super unique.
Yes.
There's no statistics on exactly like you for other people, right? And when you do the statistic, it's always like a equivalence class. Like you average, you know, you consider regardless of the, you know, some kind of difference. Like trajectory of the history, or the age, or gender, or age, you grab everybody as one thing. Which is a really brutal. And then you make some kind of prediction of, you know, past history explanation, which makes doesn't, which doesn't make sense in many cases, right? But for example, you know, uh my father, who has some kind of diagnosis. And then he is likely to live only five to ten years from now, let's say. And that's coming completely regardless of the history of this his life. But re- respecting this kind of data or not, makes a lot of difference in how I be- how I behave with him. And then, you know, you you can believe that he's not gonna die. And then, like that, I, you know, if I were you, right, I mean, if I were believing like this, then. Living in Australia, I would not come to Austral- you know, Japan every year, and then to spend time with him. Knowing that he's gonna live forever. But because I'm gonna die in five or ten years, I'm gonna come here and also probably spend more quality time. And then listen to him, and then to talk about, you know, very important thing, which is sad. But it's also, you know, very, very important kind of thing, right?
But you're not saying that you wouldn't do that.
No, 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 but you know, but if I believe he's gonna die forever, I wouldn't do that.
I think, well, I think for some people, thinking about mortality is very important to realize their life. But I think this is totally wrong. This is totally the matter of lacking of their. Well, sensation or some some, I I have, I I can't find any word, good words, but, well, I. I love my parents, I love my mother, my, I love my father, and I come to see, see them every week. Every week, and I love my daughter, I never like to split with her. I always be be with her. Always getting her to every conference, academic conferences, except.
Yeah, she's lovely, yeah, fine.
Very lovely. So I don't have to care about mortality. I do care about my, yeah, daughter. My parents, without thinking about, focusing on now, because now has infinite number, infinite amount of. Information, so you don't, so I think this is the very, yeah, kind of death of feeling. If you don't have to remember the, your happiness, your your, how can I say? Your, 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 you don't, so you, if you have to remember mortality, uh or on. So only mortality reminds you of your, you know, something very important. It's very kind of very, how can I say, it's very poor, poor sensation. I I'm always understand the importance of just the the importance of just just instance of itself. Without thinking about mortality. I I like to live without thinking mortality. But I'm always think, but I always realize the importance of current.
Moment, uh the now.
Yeah, I understand, but the the yeah, a- a- additional thing, additional thing that we haven't actually discussed. Is the degradation, right?
Degradation.
Like, you know, my father, he's gonna degrade, right, every day. And so today, you know, if I go back, you know, I can talk to him in some kind of, you know, very complicated thing, probably. But in six months from now, I don't know whether he's gonna understand what he I'm talking about today, right? Then, it's not like, you know, zero or one, but the quality of the life degrades continuously.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And whether I'm gonna to spend hundred percent right now, and then fifty percent then. Versus fifty percent then now, and then hundred percent there, will change. So life's meaning, life satisfaction in the long run, right? That definitely for me, I'm very satisfied with spending hundred percent right now with him. And then fifty percent when he is himself fifty percent. And compared to, you know, I'm doing the fifty percent now and then hundred percent later. That that that's the kind of thing that I'm talking about.
Yeah, I'm.
And that's also basically the die with the, die with zero.
Die with the idea, okay.
Health, time, and finance has a different kind of fluctuation over the time, right? Health degrades over the time. And the time availability is maximum when you are young, and the tourist when you are like forty-five years old. And then increases after that.
I see, yeah.
On the other hand, money just continue to increase.
Right.
So when you try to maximize all three things. Then, the standard strategy of putting things you wanna do afterwards. Is gonna be very, very bad. That that's general kind of advice that he said.
I see.
So, you know, you are actually doing well according to this, you know, kind of, you know, thing, like, you know, moment by moment. Doing as much as you can, right? But not to the level that, you know, like.
For your future, yeah, you just waste all the money, and then you are broke. You you don't do that.
That's bad, right?
But that's not what you mean by living in the moment, like, yeah, it's not, it it is still taking into account what comes next and what came before, right?
But for for that 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 possibly useful for you, right? Like, I I I got promoted to promo professor in forty-five or forty-three or something like that. And then after that, in within Monash, the uh promotion or, you know, salary increase will basically stops. You know, it just increases, but as long as, you know, inflation increases, right?
No big jump, no big jump anymore.
Of Australian standard. And I think it's gonna be probably same for Japanese, right? The assistant professor, associate professor, full professor, it increases, the same for US, right? But after US uh professor, it basically goes with the inflation, right? Then, the thing is, like, you know, okay, now my. Increase of the income is gonna be stopped, and then you know that when the retirement money starts. Which is like sixty years or sixty-five years. When is the time you start to. Spend more than your income? Because if you don't do that, that strange thing is that many people, after sixty-five years, seventy-five years. They continue to increase the spa- send saving. On other. And then they will be most rich at the time of the death.
When they die.
Yeah, that's really ridiculous, right?
But but isn't that because they, at that point, they are thinking about leaving the wealth to their offspring?
Right, but you know, that that book says that, you know, if you want to give the money to offspring, it's better to do it earlier.
Right.
Because, you know, some of the money will be taken by the tax.
And they might need it earlier.
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah.
Then you die as arbitrar.
There is this story where, you know, this person gave a money to the daughter, right, when the daughter is like sixty-five years old. Which is standard, when currently, like, you know, you are, you know, die dying like eighty-five years. You you may deny it, but you know, let's say it's the the standard kind of average, right? And then, if the daughter receives the money at sixty-five years old, it doesn't matter. What matters is that when she's like twenty years old or thirty years old, when she's uh rearing a kid. For his or something like that, without husband. That was the most time he, she really needed the money. But, you know, if you did everything. And then not to think about the die with zero, then that's default kind of, you know, idea, right? And it also all came from really recently, you know? You know, this is evolutionary extremely new situation, where we can actually deliver the wealth to the other people, right? You know, it didn't happen now over the last, you know, ten thousand years. It's being a new invention. Nobody knows the wa- the current, you know, the optimal, you know, solution.
But why are you talking about it?
Oh, they about this in the book, yeah.
About why you started talking about the die with zero?
Ah, in the first place? Ah, because I was reading it these days, and then I I was thinking about, you know, all this.
You don't have to think about it, that kind of thing. You were talking about your salary. That your university gave you, but you might publish a novel that may be very popular.
Right.
Or you may be invited to very popular TV show, or you may be hired by very huge project.
Right.
So you have something, you may have something very infinite number or unexpected infinite dreams. You have to have it.
Yeah, I I have that.
So you don't have.
Have that on one side. I don't know, but too pessimistic.
Yeah, pessimistic and realistic. You don't have to think about it. Let's think about very fun and interesting and very dreaming, very. Yeah, very, something miracle. I I really love to believe something miracle.
Okay, I I I I'm fine with that. Okay, I'm fine with that.
I, listen to me. I like to marry with a very great prince.
Okay.
Actually, I did.
Okay.
My husband is like a prince, uh in dream.
Okay.
So nobody, so a lot of people talk to me more.
But you might get divorced. You might get divorced. Nobody knows. Nobody knows, you know, you you get married, you know, in miracle, then it might be possible that you'll get divorced in miracle. You know, I don't know, but okay, go ahead. I'm just saying a really bad thing, because I'm a really bad thing, bad person. So what? Then then what do you wanna say?
I met a very miracle prince.
Right.
Living forever.
That's fine.
Living happily ever after.
I mean, I'm fine with your, you know, philosophy or wish, I as I, I I I said that I respect that. But I just. But I just don't want that.
Yeah.
Right?
And I.
Yeah, that's fine.
And I also don't like if someone who are thinking about only one. Uh realistic about your salary, your mortality, something like that. What's interesting?
But, you know, don't don't, probably, you know, you you need to be probably, you know. You you are not really understanding my philosophy as well. You know, because I'm actually also realistic about super huge dream as well.
Mm.
Right, otherwise, you know, how can I, how can I actually study consciousness, right? But I'm saying that, you know, super high risk and super ha- high reward thing is one thing.
Mm, okay, great.
That's one thing.
Okay.
But I I just don't want to, you know, spend hundreds percent on this.
Mm.
Because, you know, if I do that.
Mm, of course.
And if I if I fail it, you know, I I became like a peasant.
Mm.
I don't want that.
Mm.
But so what I want to do is a- according to Nassim Taleb.
Mm.
Like, that's why I'm doing this, you know, keeping the, you know, teaching job in Monash University.
Mm-hmm.
But almost like seventy percent or eighty percent, my F hoping that that will change the world. Or no, I I I will be very, very happy about that, right?
Mm.
Twenty percent, you know, I'm keeping for my salary.
Mm.
And then eighty percent, I'm super doing like, you know, super risky kind of project, no that nobody may care about it, right? And then this kind of thing is the one that I also recommend to you, right? But many people don't think about this, right? Usually, they want to take the average of this and they just do this. Or just do everything like this.
Mm.
Like, you know, attending to all the committee meeting and then not do any kind of risky things, I I'm not like that.
Mm.
So I'm saying. I'm saying that, you know, marrying with, you know, happy prince prince kind of thing, you know, one percent of the time or whatever, you know. I'm totally, you know, point, just do it.
Yes.
Just do it, you know. I I'm totally fine with the dreaming.
Mm.
And getting a marry with other so on, but.
Mm.
My philosophy, you know, I'm not saying that you should do it.
Mm.
I would be more happier.
Mm.
To think about, you know, death.
Mm.
Tomorrow.
Mm.
Mm.
And then think about what to do today.
Mm.
Rather than completely, you know, ignore the possibility of death tomorrow or one year or ten years ago. Uh after. Because I I will regret.
Mm.
You know, if I, you know, even the worst thing is that, like, you know. Tomorrow I became completely incapacitated not to be able to walk.
Mm.
Or not to speak.
Mm.
But to live for ten years.
Mm.
If I get like that, you know, I wanna do something that I want to do right now today.
Right.
Never, you know, thinking about the possibility of living forever.
Mm.
That's really horrible to me.
Mm.
That that that's the only thing that difference from you.
Yeah, 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 I understand, I understand what you're talking about. But. I never think about mortality, I I'm trying to, but I will. Yeah, I will make uh importance on every instance of my life.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I think not in a naive way, like, you don't think that that you will, you know, that you will always be able to. Yeah, for instance.
Mm.
Uh have the body you have right now and the mobility you have right now and the capacity to travel you have right now. Maybe a different body will not anymore.
Mm.
But I don't think.
Mm.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's like a priority.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Priority and also the distribution of the time, right?
Mm.
Like, right now, I mean, I I probably don't have much regret. Most of my life, right?
Mm.
The only thing that I start to feel like regret is that I regret.
Mm.
Is that I probably could have played with my kids when they were really young.
I'm always playing with my kids.
Yeah, that. Yeah, you are fine. A little bit.
You don't have to think about mortality, it's not the matter of mortality.
No, no, it's a aging.
Aging.
Aging of myself and their aging. You know, they're two years old, doesn't actually stay there.
No.
That at some time.
I and my daughter live forever, I will I will watch every instance. Very with my very care, how can I say? I will concentrate on on.
I mean, if that's the case, that's fine.
Mm.
Sorry, apart from kids, so I remember you were saying that you don't want to meet. Yourself five years ago or ten years ago because you were so mean at that time. Then then do you think that you should have changed your attitude at the time?
I mean, I I I I'm kind of accept I was.
Mm.
Mm.
I I, no, I'm not sure, you know, I'm hundred percent, you know, correct or something, right? I mean, I'm keep on changing.
Mm.
So the everything that I said today is the view right now. So my eye will change probably.
Right.
Right? But five years ago's my view was really, ah from my point right now was really narrow.
Mm.
Mm.
And I also didn't think about many possibilities or many consequences.
Mm.
So if I continue to live like that five years ago for the rest, then unhappy.
Uh so so in other words, you are regretting about your attitude five years ago, ten years ago?
Maybe.
Not that, yeah, because around five years ago, that was the time when I started to change.
Mm.
Right? And uh i- if so that I regret is a very interesting kind of the um emotion.
Mm.
Which is that you could have probably done this.
Mm.
Mm.
Or no.
Mm.
And then you did, you chose probably no.
Mm.
And then you feel afterwards, because you didn't do that.
Mm.
You are right now, right? But I tend to be, you know, thi- this is my very, very optimistic of me.
Mm.
Right? I probably have done all the things that I could have done best.
I think so.
Probably.
Mm.
So I have no regret.
Okay, so I think the.
Except for the kids.
Ah, okay.
When they were like two years or five years.
But I guess, I mean, the Sichia San ten years after.
Right.
We'll think about, I mean, the Sichia San's right now.
Oh.
Is uh, you know, the not so, you know, the open minded, for example.
Maybe.
Yeah, so then.
But this. This YouTube probably was a phenomenal.
Ah, okay.
Ten years from now.
Right.
Because of the, you know, but anyway, go ahead. Yeah.
Yeah, 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 then then the actually the 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 just my attitude. But if you think about the future myself is a superior to the current myself. Then I cannot do anything because the future myself is thinking about the current myself is a inferior. To that point, so the that is, you know, the happening at every time, every cycle.
Ah.
Right.
But because I always think that I'm definitely always incomplete.
Mm.
And inferior to many possible me.
Mm.
I don't care about that.
I see. Okay.
That that's a short answer.
Okay, you you won't change any behavior in terms of the your future possible yourself?
Mm, maybe.
Okay.
I I I don't take action thinking about that. You know, I I at that moment, I tried to choose some kind of action. At least to ha- optimize my happiness. In the long run.
Okay, so but when. Go by going back to the your kids, a story that you are somehow regretting about your previous kids. You know, the sharing that time with him, then you are changing your current behavior. So that trying to share the time, longer time.
Right, right, right. Like, you know, my son is, you know, going to the volleyball tournament.
Mm.
In Brisbane.
Mm.
December. And then I have a choice.
Mm.
Whether to go there.
Mm.
Or not.
Mm.
And then based on this kind of, you know, thinking.
Mm.
I will go.
Mm.
Because you are you you're regretting about the yeah previous.
Yeah, I don't want to regret.
Mm. Anymore.
To observe the moment that he's doing something.
Mm.
In real time.
Mm.
Other people can take a, you know, video or something, but I don't want to miss the moment.
Mm.
Mm.
If he does something, right?
Right.
And if he feel, and he sometimes say that, you know, he he plays also tennis.
Mm.
Not only the volleyball.
Mm.
And then, yeah, like like two or one month ago, he said that, you know. Yeah, that sometimes come to, you know, tennis and then, uh, you know, send off to me to the court.
Mm.
But he usually goes off running.
Mm.
And doesn't watch my, you know, playing tennis.
Mm. Mm.
And he didn't criticize me.
Okay.
But it sounded like he wanted to watch.
Mm.
He wanted me to watch his playing, right? Of course. And then, you know, I usually, you know, in Italy, I go running.
Yeah.
But if. Hearing that, I I feel like it's bad, so I probably, you know, run around when. He says that he doesn't need to be watched, like when he's playing doubles.
I see.
But he play, when he plays singles, then I come back and then watch.
So you are not aware of that aspect?
Yeah.
Right, and then that means uh there might be another aspects and another many things you are not aware of right now.
Yeah, many things.
Right, right, so what do you think about that?
Like, you know, when you say, when you when you complain something like that, right, today. Probably my attitude, my kind of perspective is very uncomfortable, annoying to many people probably.
Mm. Probably.
What?
Like, you know, assuming the death or, you know, directly talking about death, death, death too much. That's probably not appropriate and too damaging to Japanese people.
Mm.
No, don't take me as an ordinary Japanese people, I think so, but.
Mm.
Now you are talking about. Um taking me as an ordinary Japanese people, right?
Mm.
May maybe that that's that's fine, that's fine, you know, yeah, you you, you know, that that's fine as it is. But that that that's a different kind of story, you know, yeah, completely ignoring you. But if I'm talking like this, you know, the YouTube, right? Completely ignoring you, but if I'm talking about death in a YouTube, is just offending to many people. Like three hundred people who watch this. If that's the case, I don't know whether that's something that I should change or not. But that that that's me at this point.
Hmm.
Three hundred people watching it?
Right, on average, you know, probably this is gonna be on average. If we don't actually split this into the death episode or something like that. Probably like three hundred on average, but uh maybe less.
Okay.
But the previous one that we did was already three hundred people were watching.
Okay.
The one we did on the last day, you when you were talking about, you know. Yeah, three hundred.
Uh did we, were we br- blamed somebody?
No, zero zero negative comments.
Because we were talking about asshole.
And nobody cared, nobo- no, I mean, at least nobody among three hundred people cared.
Okay.
But anyway. It's hard to, I I don't know. But what 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 do you think?
But why, what are you, what are we talk?
Actually, the, yeah, Kino Ho, Kino Ho is. Abduction.
Abduction.
Abduction, so abduction from the past can be applied to the present.
Mm.
And then you have the something you are regretting about the past, then that mean the you have something you will regret in the future.
Mm.
That that's what I'm asking.
Ah. But in the future, from this point, what I'm gonna regret. Is probably different from what I was regretting when I was younger, right?
Mm.
I mean, that's a different in- interesting about academics.
Mm.
I think.
Mm.
That the the time, as the time passes on. What you are supposed to do or what you are expected to do changes along.
Mm.
Like, over the la- last year to this year. My composition of the paper also started to change quite a bit.
Mm.
Like, suddenly, se- several people actually asked me to be a co-author.
Mm.
For our paper, but I was not involved in the planning phase. But they wanted to ask me to give comments, but they gave me co-author. That happened several times in the past, but I feel like it's more comfortable to do it now.
Mm.
Mm.
And that probably didn't happen before.
Mm, yeah, yeah.
Right, right. Right?
Right.
And then in the future, you know, I I remember that I I did something like that to Crystal. For the, you know, rebuttal against, you know, Hakuan and, you know, the hands, you know. Written by Tim Bay and Olivia Carter, me and Jacob.
Mm.
And then we wanted to get some more boys from the strong boys. And then Christopher, Nate Block and Le Pictarab and so on joined later.
Mm.
But, you know, we are fine with that.
Mm.
The this kind of thing started to change, right? I know, I also, you know, I I don't know whether I should say this, but I almost always ignore or reject. The invitation to the review.
Mm.
Mm.
Almost always.
It's it's a lot of time.
Yeah, I I it's just unsustainable.
Yeah, yeah.
When you get to this stage.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, almost every day you get asked to do this review.
Mm.
And I. I usually, I used to actually say no with the recommended reviewer.
Mm.
But even that is just, you know, waste of time for me. So I just started to experiment not responding.
Mm.
And that did the effect.
But don't you do it?
So I just just, you know, con- continue to do this.
Yeah, but sometimes when it's worth it, you do.
Mm.
Yeah, so. That's the difficulty. But you 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 started to understand that ninety five percent of the thing that you are asked.
Mm.
You don't need to.
Mm.
Mm.
And that's the kind of choice.
Mm.
Right? Whether you wanna do this.
Mm.
Over spending time with your kids.
Mm.
Or, you know, your family.
I never do it.
Mm.
Mm.
And that that's that's your choice.
Mm.
Fine, and then, but sometimes, you know, it may or towards your career goal or no. Or, you know, but that's your choice.
Mm.
And I used to choose the other before.
I see.
At least when I was in your career stage.
I appreciate your experience, but you don't want to extract the general rule from your own experience? Or you are just focusing on your own experience?
Some general rule from uh.
Can that that can be applied to the other people?
I have no idea.
You no idea, I mean that you don't want to or you want?
I I have no idea, actually. I mean, I. I don't know, I.
Well, do you feel your experience aligns with experience of other people or not? Do you feel you share?
Means uh.
No, just like your life?
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Well. I think. Yeah, a lot of people thinks like now. But I feel uncomfortable about it.
What what what's uncomfortable about?
Everybody thinks about mortality.
Mm.
Everybody is motivated by mortality.
Mm.
But why do we care about mortality to motivate ourselves?
But so isn't. Do you do you ever think in terms of my time, so if I don't do something now.
Mm.
Mm, I might not be able to do it.
Well.
Again.
I don't know, I I I'm not sure, I I I can answer your question. But when I gave uh my daughter. Then I, before I having got my daughter, I of course naturally believe mortality. Everyone die dies, I die, everyone die. I will become old, everyone becomes old, my mother, my father too, and also my kids too.
Mm.
But when I gave my daughter, I couldn't believe my daughter can die. Then I was surprised every, a lot of researchers. There must be a lot of lot of researchers on some kind of. Yeah, Jesus Christ or Buddha Buddha, but they never talked about immortality. They all believe. They all believe they must die.